We'll open the meeting for June 7th of 2022. The meeting's being conducted in a hybrid manner. If anybody is recording, that's fine. You just need to let us know, anyone? Okay, we are gonna be recording this and placing it online for folks to view and listen to. Seven o'clock, Tom Planner's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Okay, just a couple of updates. I need to run to the board. I did meet with Mr. Norm Story. Shortly after the last meeting, he owns some family property on Conga Monroe. And is looking to split out some agricultural land. Under normal circumstances, it wouldn't be an option, given that that agricultural portion is currently landlocked. But he is examining an opportunity to convey it to Jason Land that he owns in concert with another part. So just a meeting with Mr. Story. Last. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting the precise date. I met with Mr. Foster Harrison over at the Greens West subdivision. You may recall that he resides at the property. Thank you so much, Jim, for his address to the property. The subdivision that has the open space access, he and Dr. Dargan sat before the board, expressed their preferences. There was a I'm gonna call it the an awakening to what the board's decision was as the contractor was looking at the place, the stones out there. As you might recall, the ultimate decision was to place them in pairs at intervals. That wasn't what their expectation was. So I did meet with Mr. Harrison to share with him the decision, walk him through the debate that the board had over the spacing configuration. At the time, he certainly expressed his disappointment at that matter, and we met the Monday afterwards to review his concerns. Let's see, last Friday, after discussing the points with town council, Mr. Sutton and I met with Jim Sullivan, who's a resident over at Sunset Ranch Estates, as an opportunity to listen and not respond owing to ongoing litigation. Mr. Sutton, you're welcome to expand upon it, but the meat of the discussion was really about Mr. Sullivan's pull for resolution regarding the road situation at the subdivision. I did meet, I spoke with Carol Smith, who resides, oh gosh, do I still have that open right here? Off the hillside road. And she I probably lost that address. She's concerned that there's some activity that may be transitioning or bending towards a commercial and behind her property on a neighboring parcel. So I'll be coordinating with the building inspector's office and looking to our files to see what permits are open for that particular property. Received a copy of a letter and by Mrs. Thornton, expressing to the South Board her interest in continuing her role as the Associate Planning Board Member. To that end, the item before us to manage is a joint meeting with the Select Board. Either the 13th or the 27th.
Do we have we have your motion on that though? Is it just a joint meeting?
Just the
It's a joint meeting, okay.
So if there's any preference, I want to make, we'll communicate that back.
13th, 13th, next Monday?
Yes.
Well, that solves that. So if you want me there, it's gonna be the 27th.
I'm happy to have anyone and everyone.
Do it on 13th.
No, no, do it on the 27th. 27?
I agree there. All right, 13th.
You'll have a call on the 27th.
Okay, well, that's fine. Be right back into it.
Fantastic.
All right.
Then so this 27th for determination?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thanks, everyone. And that's it for the town plan report.
All right.
Come on, totally, but you can have that back.
Mr. Hudson is here.
We'll go to 7:05, public comments. Anybody have anything for the board tonight that is not on the agenda that they would like to bring to the attention of the board? Yes?
Just wanted to make a few points. There are a lot of people in town.
If you could just thank you, Cindy.
I'm an retired accountant, an accountant for 31 years, and I'm a geek about numbers, and I bet it. I am the person who moved here from West Springfield 30 years ago this year. And when, when I moved to West Springfield when I was a kid, there were four farms. And there are none now, and there are no farm stands, and West Springfield is 17.54 square miles. Their population is 28,835. Southwick is 31 square miles, and we have 9,232 left figures I can find from 2020. And everybody thinks they're flush with money because they have a lot of commercial properties in there, a lot of people paying taxes. They're scrambling for every dollar and cutting their budgets, just like we are. Because the more you get, the more you have to spend. Their town hall is gigantic. They're just building, are building a new school to replace one, and they've built a new high school, a new middle school since I left. And they're all bigger. There is no open land left except in bare hold. I know what I'm talking about there. Westfield just cut their full budget, the last I knew, about $400,000. They have a lot, 41,303 people there, and they're 47.31 square miles. They have a lot more industrial properties than we do, and they're always adding them. And they're not in any better shape than we are. So expanding does not put money in your pocket because you have to consider the costs. Because you're gonna need more schools, you're gonna need, you're gonna have more roads, you're gonna have to plow them, you're gonna have to hire more DPW people. You're gonna have, West Springfield, when I moved there, had a small town hall. Now they've got a gigantic one. They took over the old aggregate. And that's all there is that's in there now. And they have two fire stations. We have one, and we don't even have full-time fire departments. But that, if you keep building, that's gonna have to change, and that costs money. You're gonna have to need more hoistsmen, that costs money. So it's not, it's not free. That's what I want people to understand. That just because some company goes, well, we're gonna pay you like last year, $900,000 a year, you're gonna end up spending most of it.
Any other public comments? Anybody on Zoom? Okay. 7:10, 18 Hudson Drive and One Wally Way Industrial Restrictor Zone. Public hearing on a special permanent site plan approval and stormwater management permit for proposed office and warehouse building. Let's Lee, how are you?
Good.
I'm good. Let me just read the notice and then I'll hand it over to you. Notice, public hearing. Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, 7:10 PM via Zoom and Atlanta Land Use Hearing Room 754 College Highway. Notice hereby given in accordance with the provision of Mass General Law Chapter 48, Section 11, of the Town of Southwood bylaws that the planning board will hold a hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, June 7th, 2022, at 7:10 PM via Zoom and Atlanta Land Use Hearing Room Town Hall at 454 College Highway, Southwood, Mass, on an application by Wally Properties, Inc. For a special permit, site plan approval, and stormwater management permit for properties located at 18 Hudson Drive and One Wally Way in the industrial restricted zone and wellhead protection district. The properties are shown on current assessors map 49, parcel 13, map 67, parcel 11. Zoom information is provided. The applicant proposes to construct an 84,000 plus or minus square foot warehouse office building with off-street parking and other side effects in accordance with the code of Southwood zoning bylaws, Chapter 183 and Chapter 185, Sections 9, 10, 19, 22, and 30. Copy of the application and plans may be inspected by contact with Tom Planner, John Goddard, or its phone number or email address. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time of man designated, Metro Doris, or Southwood Planning Board. Lee? How are you?
Good.
Good. So let's hear what you got.
Yeah. So for the record, my name is Lee Cravo, Valleveck Associates. Here tonight for the, as the chair just stated, the site plan application, special permit application, and stormwater permit application. I'm here tonight representing Wally Properties, Inc. Tonight, we have with us Mr. Tom Hanson of Wally. Here to just kind of answer any of the procedural or technical questions you've been trying to the operation. But just to give a brief overview of where the property is located. It's located off of Hudson Drive, which is on this plan is running north to south here. Just past here is Wally Way, kind of creates the cul-de-sac up here, and that and the main road is down here to the south.
Lee, I'm just gonna have you pause for one second while we bring up a copy of that plan, just so that folks on Zoom can sort of see as well. Thank you. What, um?
This is the existing, so it should be the first one.
Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, so we're just talking the existing conditions of the property is today. So currently, this property has been mostly cleared of any mature vegetation. It's been kind of reworked over the years. Spark piles moved around and just basically, it's just an open parcel at the 18th Hudson Drive address. Now, this property is, has a property line here, so this, this forms the 18th Hudson Drive. Then the other property that's part of the application is this property where you see a portion of the building here, and that part extends, or that property extends to the cul-de-sac of Wally Way. So the topography of the parcel is generally flat, like super flat. But if you start getting into it, the front half of the property sort of just, just gently grades towards Hudson Drive. The rear of the property grades to towards the existing developed area of One Wally Way. And there is some topography change in the southeast corner of the parcel where the site is currently. The site is currently zoned industrial restricted. It's about, both the properties are about 10.24 acres in size. And it's also entirely located in the wellhead protection district, so the entirety of the site that we're working with. So that's the existing, that's the existing. We have a color graphic here, or just go to the people on Zoom, but I hate to waste the effort to enter the color graph just here. So what's being proposed is an 80,000 square foot warehouse building that runs east to west on the on, expands the property line, so that's why the application includes both. We do have a variant into, or to petition for some reduced setbacks to split the properties. If that doesn't happen, we can still proceed with the plan as is. So an 80,000 square foot warehouse building and a 4,800 square foot office building on the, let's call it the front end of the building, the west side of the building, that had fronts on Hudson Drive. Adjacent to the proposed building is a 76-car parking lot where employees and visitors can park. There's an overhead door access to the building here, and then a trunk access drive that, or just an access drive that gets to the rear of the property to where six loading docks are proposed. So the way the topography works is that the front, the first floor elevation will be basic, will be about elevation 226 in the parking lot here, finish for elevation, I think it's 227 and a half. So up here will be pretty flat, but then the great drops as you get down to the, as you go down the drive aisle towards the rear of the building. And that's that great difference for the truck docks. And and at the rear of the property, you are proposing to connect to the adjacent One Wally Truck Maneuvering Area. So One Wally has a number of truck docks along the building here with an existing pave apron, let's call it, adjacent to the building. And we'll, you know, we're going to connect these two truck moving areas at the rear of the property. Further, in regard to stormwater, there is a, a surface infiltration basin that's being proposed adjacent to the frontage on Hudson Drive and along the southern property line. That is strictly for roof runoff. Then we have a sub-circuit system that will collect runoff from both the driveway, the truck area, and the adjacent truck area, which is currently an existing loophole, to handle and meet the stormwater regulations. So, I mean, from a, from a site design overview standpoint, that's, that kind of gets, that's the gist of it. From a utility standpoint, water will be connected off of Hudson Drive. There's no sewer in the area, so there will be a septic system needed for the site. There's a nice open lawn here that's where we anticipate to install a septic system. Gas and electric will also be pulled off of Hudson Drive. From a landscaping standpoint, we have proposed a number of shade trees along the frontage here, and also adjacent to the driveway. And then as well as some screening for the dumpster location, which is proposed right here, and that, along with a fence, will screen the dumpster pad. Additionally, the site will be illuminated. We have a number of wall packs along the building and, and a couple throughout the parking lot to be, to provide lighting as necessary. And I believe that's broad, that's a pretty good overview of what is being proposed on the site. As currently proposed, the, you know, the, the new building meets the setbacks. Meets the setbacks in regards to frontage, front yard setback, side yard setback, and all the zoning requirements. We will have to cut into that sort of the topography that's in this lower corner here. But that's, you know, that's in connection to get those truck docks, the elevation for those truck docks. And I believe that's really it. So if there's any questions from the board, it's
Why don't we first open it up to the board, then I'll read in the comments from the department. But did the board have any questions before we get into the department comments?
I'm interested in the parking spaces, the calculation for that. Do we have a sheet that shows that?
Yeah, it's, it's provided on sheet. C4. Up there.
So the parking spaces are going to be required for employees? How many people will be working?
50 parking spots, based on the calculations. We're providing 76.
30 employees. And
Okay, good.
5,000 square feet of
Yeah, that, that would be my question then. Why are you providing that many parking spaces? Can't you minimize that parking lot area?
There's quite a potential to reduce the parking lot. Generally, when you build a parking lot, you wanna have some excess space so you're not right at it for zoning, per se, just to shift changes, things like that. I, you know, you think that the zoning calculation, you know, some extra parking spaces.
How, how many employees in the building for the parking spaces?
Right now, from what I understand, it's about 20 office and then 12 to 20, depending on. Maybe there's some additional.
The Rob Lebeck tomorrow, Lebeck Associates, how you doing there?
Hello there. Yes.
Yeah, it's not good. So, yeah, we had discussed this. So basically, it was about 4,800 square feet of office in the front. Anticipate that that would accommodate approximately 10 employees.
20.
20, yeah, with 10 maybe maximum working warehouse in the back. The idea is that this is generally going to be a warehouse facility, and most of that 80,000 square feet that you see is, is really warehouse. That could vary over the years where they might need to take, you know, have flexible space. So we have a little bit more parking than is specifically required, but not inappropriate for the size of the building, given the nature of the dynamic operation that Wally
Yeah, my concern would be the impervious surface. It's sort of an unusual situation. Usually, we're down to the last parking space trying to calculate, can something happen? And here we're seeing, you know, quite a bit more. So I would just want to be thinking about that.
I would, I would certainly be willing to talk to these folks from Wally.
I mean, if there's future thoughts of expansion or changing the use of the warehouse where you need more parking spaces, then I guess then it's reasonable to construct a large parking area.
Yeah, we'd like approval for it, and if prior construction, they may be willing to bank it where they don't need it, and no sense of constructing it if they don't need it at this point, but the stormwater system would be designed so that they could expand it.
Because we always have concerns when it's over the wellhead as far as infiltration and those kinds of things, concentrating the runoff, whatever.
Any other board comments or questions?
Single shift operation or two shifts, you know?
Currently, it'll be a single shift. The future, I'm not sure, but
All right, so let me get into these comments. Let's start with the easy one first. Building inspector has no objection to the plans moving forward. So the comments from DPW. From Randy Brown, DPW reviewed the application, the site plan for 18 Hudson Drive, One Wally Way, for the plans prepared by our Lebeck Associates dated 5/322, and provides the following comments. One, applicant shall provide the type and daily volume of vehicles entering slash leading the facility. Two, applicant shall clarify whether the properties at 18 Hudson Drive and One Wally Way are being legally combined. If not, easement should be granted between the two properties to address how stormwater is handled, and who is responsible for maintaining the various stormwater components that collect water from both properties. Three, applicant shall provide details on the anticipated water usage. This will be necessary to check whether there will be impacts to adjacent properties on Hudson Drive and Wally Way. Four, DPW believes that the existing water main is located a few feet closer to the property line than shown on the plans. The proposed dry well and catch basin may need to be shifted a few feet from where shown as well to avoid this water main. The location of the main can be verified in a field prior to construction. Five, the applicant shall remove the existing leech, leaching basin that is near the driveway entrance, as it will no longer be needed with the new catch basin and dry well at this location. Six, the applicant should clarify the amount of material to be removed from the property. It appears a significant amount will be removed, in particular at the rear of the property, if the amount exceeds 1,000 cubic yards, and an excavation permit is required. And seven, applicant shall obtain a new water service permit and a new driveway permit from DPW prior to construction. Anything on that, Lee, for Rob, before we get to the next one, because those are usually the more substantive ones?
Yeah, we have answers to all of them.
Fantastic.
I had emailed, it was pretty late in the day, but I had emailed responses to each one of those. We started. So the applicant shall provide the daily volume, type of daily volume of vehicles entering and leaving the facility. So passenger cars, those will be mostly associated with the employees and the warehouse and operation. We estimated about conservatively 60 to 120 trips a day, and then tractor trailers are 6 to 12 tractor trailers trips per day. You know, just conservative estimates without knowing exactly what the operation, how it's going to operate there. Two, applicant shall clarify whether the properties are going to be confined. I addressed that. We currently have variants. On the side of your setbacks requested, and if the bans is are granted, the properties shall remain and the easements shall be provided, so they will have to, you know, address the cross drain easements. And if they're not granted, then they'll remain as is. Number three, applicant shall provide details on the anticipated water usage. This will be necessary to check whether the impacts or the impacts to adjacent properties on Hudson Drive. So based on the square footage and the Title V regulations, we estimate about 510 gallons per day, based on the usage. Pretty light usage from a water standpoint, this empty warehouse, you know, low number of employees and office space, so it's not a huge draw on water demand. And then number four, DPW believes that existing water main is located a few feet closer to the property than shown on the plans. We had it shown basically just under the edge of the pavement. I think Randy believes it's probably in the tree belt along the side of the road. We just say understood, and the contractor shall verify its precise location, make any adjustments to the plans necessary. Number five, the applicant shall remove the existing leach basin that is near the driveway entrance, as it will no longer be needed with the new catch basin and dry well at this location. Essentially, there's an existing dry well that collects Hudson Drive roadway drainage, right adjacent, not under, but right adjacent to the new driveway entrance. And just to provide more, you know, more grading flexibility and a better just drain system altogether, for Hudson Drive, we're just gonna install a new one about 10 feet south. So it's just replacing what's already existing, just a little bit. Number six, the applicant should clarify the amount of material to be removed from the property. That's, you know, basically, we got this rear corner here where, so it hasn't been previously, I guess, excavated. But yes, we do anticipate that we will have to submit an earth excavation permit. And seven is
You can skip seven, that's fine. Randy puts that in every single comment, etc. I think. Don't worry about that. It's even more informative. All right, and I do have your letters, Lee, so I can sort of touch on it as you go along here, too, although the other ones are certainly less substantive. Okay. So let's just get out the, get the police out of the way. Safety officer review. Lieutenant Vanish sees nothing that would constitute a safety issue or concern of the police department. Fire comments. View the plan for the following requirements. Unless I'm missing it, I do not see hydrant locations. These will need to be approved. And if there's an existing hydrant?
There's an existing hydrant directly across here, and due to the size, the building will be sprinkling, so we're anticipating we do not maintain a hydrant on the property, but it is required, concerning the provided.
Okay. And it says, I do not see the fire department connection. This will have to be approved. Okay, um, and it says, I do not see the fire department connection. This will have to be approved. Again, you're going to indicate that you'll submit all the plans to the fire department before it's before the issuance of a building permit. Dumpster will require current from the fire department, um, as you know. Um, and then finally, the, the design lacks details such as anticipated three sixty to three hundred sixty degree exterior view to establish safety concerns, approved roof access in comparison to the street or parking areas. Um, and again, it's going to be completed and distributed for comment from the fire department once it's. Okay. All right, um. And finally, our last two stormwater coordinator. His comments, um, is that the last one I have?
I believe so.
Okay.
Good, Mike?
Yes.
Couple of questions. Um, are you putting any solar panels on this roof? Number one, just curious. And number two, does town have the water capacity to handle the facility?
Yeah, go ahead. Uh, so the, there were bonus plans on having structural support, but they could add solar panels at some point if it becomes feasible and financially advantageous. And Mr. Ottinger, this will use probably less than your house.
One little well.
Yeah. Now, five hundred and fifty gallons is similar to a, uh, you know, that would be basically a, a five family house under Title V.
Okay, thank you.
All right, uh, stormwater comments. Uh, one, um, and these are going by, um, the, um, the plant submitted. Uh, one general, uh, the architectural style is noted to be compatible with the character and scale of buildings in the neighborhoods. Our architectural elevations available at this time. And. They're not. They're not. So we are working, uh, while the computers working with a couple contractors, uh, design build contractors in the area determining who will be building the building. If it was appropriate, um, certainly if the planning board wanted to see the elevation drawings or, you know, some sort of graphic, you know, prior to the issuance of any, uh, or whatever, you know, we would come, you know, revisiting that wouldn't be an issue, but I think it would be consistent with while the computers, as it exists there today, that.
It's correct, the plan, the same, same heights.
Same heights, similar materials and colors.
Instead of a block, it's probably going to be steel exterior. Um, the office space in the front, we block, so it matches the building. And so we mentioned colors, same pitch roof. So from the design, it'll line up the back, so aesthetically it should look nice.
Is there a timeframe as far as getting architectural drawings?
We're just at the initial stages of meeting with the design build folks. Um, as part of their initial proposals, they're probably going to give us very basic three dimensional drawings for that. And I guess probably in the next thirty to forty-five days. And then if we approve that, then the one with full blown architectural drawings. Certainly they have something.
Um, sheet, uh, C five. Uh, John, maybe if I bring it up just so that I'm. Focus time. Record and sit on there. Is that up?
Yes, we are.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, please provide inlet protection at the replacement dry well, PDW one along Hudson Drive is also suggested at PCB three. And I believe you guys are going to do that in the updated plans. Uh, be, please call out and depict the extent of erosion control blanket in. Uh, again, going to put that in the updated plans. Please provide spot grading detail for curb ramping and accessible parking areas is also suggested for the northerly overhead door entrance. And again, you guys are going to do that, uh, let me see. Yeah, go ahead.
Accessible parking requires a minimum or maximum of two percent crossload. So I believe just the, uh, statement is just showing spot grades that finish straight components.
Yep. Mr. Chairman, one of the reasons we don't show some of those spot grades on the accessible routes is that oftentimes during the, the building design process, they might have vestibules or other things that would essentially have us adjusting on ramps in those locations. Not that we couldn't show that, but it's potentially subject to change before the issuance of construction set. So that's why, that's why that information is not currently. Yep, okay. Yeah, I mean, you guys know, you know, you know, the, the sort of maximum, so, you know, you could certainly say within that.
Or rid it out.
Or without that, yeah. We've gone out there and met you before, so, but I, so, um, all right. Uh, D, the southerly curving at the Hudson Drive entrance may need to be truncated to allow for roadway runoff to enter the replacement dry well. And you guys are going to make, uh, the gutter line of Hudson Drive should be maintained and allow for roadway drainage to freely enter the dry well as the response.
Correct, correct. It's just right at the front, let's see if I show the grading, but it's a little radius here, just make sure water can get off the pavement.
Okay. Um, it is recommended to install silt fence or an erosion control log at the toe of the constructed slope to protect against the transport of sediment during construction and until vegetated stabilization can occur at the pieced away cut slope. That'll be updated to reflect that. Sheet C seven. Says, please add the arborvities to be planting legend. Which you will do with eleven, a total of eleven arborvitie around the proposed dumpster location. Correct?
Yeah, it's, uh, the eleven round dumpster that make it to the legend at the top.
Okay. Sheet SL one, uh, it is suggested to replace or augment the north facing wall pack on the office wing with a pole mounted light closer to the back of the curve such that the accessible parking area and sidewalk will be safely eliminated. And you will update to reflect that. Uh, finally, sheet D four. Please verify that the proposed dry well will have the same capacity as that which it will be replacing. Um, and that will have at least the minimum capacity. There's, okay.
Do you have one more? Shall we now?
Go for it.
Uh, please, I'm sorry, one comment that should have made the list. Were over sixty parking spaces for the new, uh, parking area that trips a requirement that we have some vegetated islands out there. Uh, would there, do you foresee any difficulty? I see that it's all drains to the center. If the striped areas were generally converted to, uh, vegetated islands, would you see any issues? Not the structure is for the access hours, obviously, but the ones within the lot.
Yeah, we can easily turn the, uh, the striped island at the end to landscape. Appreciate.
All right, um. Uh, before we, so given all that, any, uh, board questions or comments? The applicant.
Was this, uh, when was this application submitted? What day was it logged in with the town clerk? May ninth. Ninth. Okay, so it was clocked in on May ninth. Thank you.
That's cool.
All right, any other board questions or comments? Okay, uh, any town officials have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will turn to public questions or comments. Yes, just name and address before you.
Bill Friedenberg, twenty-three Hudson Drive, elevated across the street. Um, is there, the tractor trailers, are they going to have access from Hudson Drive or Wally Way?
Potentially, they'll have access from both sides, because there will be an entrance on, off Hudson Drive that cut there, has access by the driveway down to the rear of the building. Um, and also there's existing truck maneuvering areas adjacent to One Wally Way that is going to be connected in the back.
Okay, the catch basin, I don't know if you ever drive down Hudson Drive when it rains, it's supposed to rain the next couple of days. It doesn't work in the winter time, you know, there's bike, it's that side of the road is just bikes.
So the catch basin fills up basically, doesn't it?
Right.
We can certainly work with DPW to, uh, address any, any outstanding conditions, existing conditions that are out there that, you know, takes an additional dry well, maybe two dry wells instead of just the one.
If you stand out there when it's raining, you can see the water coming off the parking lot from Walling Precision. At the Hudson Drive and then just down, running down the road.
Uh, any other questions or comments? We'll start with both live and then we'll go to Zoom. Anybody here? Uh, any questions or comments from folks on Zoom? Okay, um, so I think before we continue it on, any, um, other board questions or comments? Okay, so, um. I think we need, you know, update the plans to address what, you know, the comments that were made. Um, if you, the quicker you can get those, so we can circulate those. Um, I'll certainly. Your letter came in toward the end of the day. It'll certainly be circulated to the, to the various departments so they can see the responses as well. And, you know, you guys, I'm sure will work if there's any other things that need to be clarified in the meantime. You know, my inclination is to, to, you know, we do get, we do get the elevations, I think, for every single application that comes in here. I don't want to treat this differently. So I think, you know, we would like to have some, some drawings on those. I mean, I, I don't expect it's going to be a, a significant issue, but, you know, I think for completeness, they have to be able to see that before we prove any permit would be appropriate. Yeah, I think that's it that I have. Um. All right, uh, what do we, you have the, um, agenda?
Good luck.
Yeah. Um. Yeah, so why don't we just put it on for seven ten? On, uh, June twenty eighth. We're doing June, Jim? Uh, all right, so, um, uh, do I hear a motion to continue this to seven ten, uh, PM on June twenty eighth?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Phil, sing a second.
Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil Singer, aye.
Even something, aye.
Dave's been, aye. Okay. So seven ten PM on June twenty eighth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to do this, um, because I want to make sure that I'm not stealing something from the watch. All right, um, seven twenty in planning board time already. We have six eighty-six College Highway public hearing on a preliminary subdivision application. All right, let's give me.
Oh, that's why.
Tag off there, that was pretty cool.
Give me one second, Rob. Let me just read in the notice. All right, notice public hearing Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two, seven twenty PM. The Zoom and in the land use hearing room, four fifty-four College Highway. Notice hereby given that the Southwood Planning Board will hold up hybrid public hearing on Tuesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-two, at seven twenty PM at the Southwood Town Hall, four fifty-four College Highway, Southwood, Mass. Also be a Zoom on a preliminary subdivision application by, in this land development, MA LLC for property located at six eighty-six College Highway and the industrial restricted zone submitted under Mass General Laws, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one S, and chapter three fifteen of the Town of Southwood filings. Property is shown on current assessive map fifty-one, parcel ten. Zoom information is provided. Copy application and plans may be inspected by contacting the town planner, John Goddard, at his moment email. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the application should appear at the time in this manner designated, Michael, Joe, person, Southwood Planning Board. Um, all right. The only reminder I'm going to have, because we, and I'm sure you know this, um, but we don't do a ton of these preliminary ones, um, is waivers need to be requested during this process, uh, or else they are, uh, late. So, um, just as a reminder, again, I'm sure you know that, but sort of.
Yes.
Got brought to my attention as we were preparing, so I want to make sure that I communicated that. Okay, go ahead, Rob. Uh, gaming, for the record, I'm Rob Lebeck, my Lebeck Associates. Represent, uh, representing formerly Griffin Land. Uh, their, their new entity is, um, Gus Land Development, Mass LLC. Uh, Tim Westgaleek is my client. I've been working with him for a number of years on this project.
I have to speak up just a bit for those people plus.
Sure.
The olive.
So I've been working for Tim Westgaleek for a number of years on subject property and a, a number of other properties that they own in the Town of Southwick. I think I met him about fifteen years ago. There's been a lot of plans, uh, for, or a lot of ideas for this property. This is the property that you guys affectionately know as the Carvana site. Um, this is also was looked at for a previously large development, um, prior to the Carvana folks coming to the table. And even before then, I had seen this on plans by a local landscape architect by the name of Dave, Dave Payne, uh, who had contemplated a bunch of concepts on this property. So this is a property that we're well aware of. Uh, at the town meeting, I told the folks at the town, um, that, uh, you know, Carvana folks were leaving, they left. I doubt they're coming back. Maybe in New England. Uh, that said, uh, we, you know, the, this property is, you know, probably the single most developable piece of property in Western Massachusetts that I've run into from a, from an industrial standpoint, property zone, industrial restricted. It's got sandy soils, it's got limited wetlands, and it's got a lot of contiguous public area to be developed. Uh, for good or for bad, whether it's somebody farming it from the Town of Southwick or whether it's somebody trying to do either small projects or large projects. Um, I can tell you that we listened, uh, and, and heard loud and clear, uh, that the Town of Southwood did not want to see a large development on this property. Uh, so we're back before you with a very simple um, subdivision concept plan. I call it a concept, but preliminary plans, not a definitive plan, okay? There is no tenants proposed specifically for any of these lots. We're just showing a very basic subdivision. They would like to market this property for sale. They're continuing, continuing, continuing to market this property for sale. Jack and John Reed from, uh, CBRE have a sign out there. It's been no secret or surprise, should be no surprise to anyone that they would like to, uh, sell this property. Uh, they have been in talks with some agricultural folks. They have been in talks with, I know, you know, I guess, Blue Rhino was one of the potential interested parties. There's also interested parties along the frontage. So all we're here for, and just to clarify tonight, all we're here for tonight is a preliminary subdivision plan. Um, we've submitted this plan, uh, to basically break the property up into a few usable lots as opposed to one large contiguous.
As opposed to one large contiguous property. Not to say that those lots couldn't be recombined in development as one property if somebody came to the table. Obviously, everything with the sale of property is largely driven, so I wanna be very clear. I'm not saying it's going to be developed specifically like this or specifically, um, different from this. So what we're proposing is a very short cul-de-sac road under the, uh, required length. We're showing a total of five lots, one at the corner, which would arguably be some sort of pad site. We're showing another lot, two, also along the frontage on College Highway. That would be another potential pad site. As mentioned in the past, and previous applicants were more industrial, and they weren't necessarily interested in the retail corridor where you find a college highway. But we believe that there is marketability to that. So those are two parcels that are being shown. In addition to those parcels, we have lot three, which is a large lot here. Lot four, which is a small lot, and lot five. We anticipate that a larger, but not at the scale of what we've seen in the past for proposals. A larger user may be interested in this. We've talked to local development, um, agencies. Uh, we've talked to all different types of folks that have potential interest in, in this property. The industrial market, just so everybody knows, is probably as hot as it's ever been. So people are looking, they're looking for places to expand, they're looking for places that meet their logistical needs. So what we're looking at doing is, right now, reducing the overall size of any individual development. And we're breaking it up. We think it's a logical break where the, where the, the lot lines are, but. It would likely be between now and the submission of the definitive plan. That may be more market chip, so it might not look exactly like this when we come back. But this is the first step in the process. We wanted to play for it to know where we're coming from. Um, we anticipate that we'd be back within seven months with the definitive plan. Um, and at that point. They would have time, once, if, if and when that gets approved, they would have time to develop the property in that region. So I know there's a lot of questions about this, so I'll stop there. And I will be happy to answer any questions to the chair.
Okay, thank you, Rob. So before I read in comments, um, and just to clarify, um. You know, it's, I think it's a little unclear, and I, you spoke with town council more than I did, but, um, as to whether a public hearing is, is necessary on a, on a preliminary application. Um, it does have to be, you know, you do have to submit the list of butters and, and notices going, so we sort of ran it that way, uh, out of abundance of caution and to make sure that there was. No issues there. Um, so we will run it as a normal public hearing, um, but we're probably gonna do it anyways in that manner, so. Um, anybody on the board have any questions or comments that they want to raise before we get into the comments from the other departments?
Of course. Rob, the cul-de-sac, what's the radius there? Is that an industrial access point that's gonna need a, a larger radius than, than a residential use?
I don't know the radius off the top of my head, I apologize, but it would be for industrial use. And it is, it is for industrial use. I think we have a width of thirty feet for the road. As far as tractor trailer trucks or some sort of industrial user spinning around there, I don't think that's really what we would anticipate. I think. Cul-de-sac is really gonna be more for, uh, emergency vehicles. As far as vehicles that may be going to the sites, there will be adequate ample site development. You know, site circulation providers, so that you can get into a site and get out of it effectively. Um, but we can make sure that, that obviously.
So the roadway is adequate going to that cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Yeah. And there to be spurs accessing the three parcels factor?
I would anticipate curb cuts off of this roadway, um, that would access the other parcels, other than these two, which would likely be accessed off of.
So it goes far enough down into the property, you wouldn't extend it any farther?
Again, that, you know, that, let's just, hypothetically speaking, let's just say you have a sixty thousand square foot precision manufacturing, just yet another hundred thousand square foot.
Medical research facility.
There you go, right? So we're kind of thinking, and not to say that that's necessarily gonna be a user, a specific user, but. The idea is we're breaking it down to more bite-sized parts, so that, you know, those types of users can, you know. Can anticipate looking at this, and then based on that, the folks can potentially sell the property that they wanna sell without. Probably, um, much resistance, because it's a smaller user, ideally small, less traffic.
Any other comments from board members, the questions for? Yeah, go ahead.
Rob, um, I'm trying to look at it through the computer screen here, so I'm not seeing a whole lot. Will this be, this will not be the whole piece of land that, that Carvana was looking at, is that correct?
There was two pieces of land that Carvana was looking at. One of them was the subject property. I believe the Red Wilwood's property was the other. Uh, property that they were including in their development. Uh, this does not include the Red Wilwood's property.
This, all right, so if this piece is presented to the board and approved by the board, does that, um, prevent any more access off of College Highway?
It does not.
So there's still be access from College Highway to get the other land that ties into the Red Wilwood's piece?
That is correct. Unless someone were to purchase the land, one of the lots. On the, on College Highway, and then they could still provide access to somebody should they be interested, they just would have to accommodate that in some way.
Okay, I think, thank you.
Okay, uh, any other questions or comments from board members? Okay, let me.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the one. I gotta go ahead and draw my ass.
Okay.
All right. Um, you know what the, just rough acreage sizes of each of lots is?
I do. Um, so lot one, which is right here, is five point seven acres. Um, lot two is five point seven acres. Lot three, which is this big one here, not to say that couldn't be partitioned differently, um, but that is forty-eight acres. And lot five, I'm sorry, lot four, is six point six acres, but that includes a significant amount of weather. Um, and the lot five is at twenty-three.
And it's only, the, the only access would be off of Tanner at this proposed preliminary plan.
The preliminary plan, that's correct, but I just wanted to make it clear that, uh, let's just say now, between now and their definitive submission. Uh, they have some interested parties, they may reconfigure these lines, uh, but yet the general idea is to get people into the site. Uh, ideally off of Tannery. There's a number of permitting reasons for that. I know that there was a comment related, uh, to signaling and, and in, uh, in traffic. I totally understand that. There's also a number of permitting-related, state-level permitting-related implications that we would, uh, avoid by coming in through Tannery. So there's some subtle fees that we'll have to consider, and obviously the town has to consider when we get that way.
Um, any other? Or comments or questions? Okay, um, so let me go through. The comments and questions from other departments, um. Which I believe you guys have had the opportunity to, 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 and there is a dress, um, so I can. Uh, go through that as well. First, from the fire department, um. First concern is, um, road dimension with, uh, is it, is Chief Anderson gonna assume the area will be frequented by tractor trailers, unit being a business park? And you indicate that the road, the, the roadway width would be thirty feet. Um, we talked about that. Cul-de-sac as well.
Cul-de-sac are typically a sixty-foot radius. I would assume you have at least that. I don't know if we've, uh, included the additional, uh, you know. Length on that radius, I don't believe we have, but, you know, should it need to be, be plenty of area, I guess. To make it bigger.
Sure, I mean, I, I assume, I assume a couple things. One is this is preliminary.
Yeah.
And, and it's supposed to be a bit of a bare bones idea of what's going on. Secondly, I assume if there are tenants or, 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 you know, potential tenants with certain businesses, um, that may necessitate, or if it's gonna be marketed to certain businesses, that may necessitate a cul-de-sac that is. Sufficient to allow for tractor trailers and the like. Okay, uh, the other comment from Chief Anderson is the hydrant locations, uh, with them being located on both sides of the street. Uh, as we don't, we do not know what future development will be, limiting hydrants to one side of the street may shut streets down to emergency needs.
Actually, we could, we can certainly work with that.
Okay. Um, from EPW. Uh, first, um, the applicant should consider accessing the property via College Highway, which is better suited for large volume of traffic in and out of the facility. A subdivision with sole access off Tannery Road may limit developments that require high traffic volumes, and they also trigger requirement to incorporate a traffic signal at the College Highway, Tannery Road intersection.
I think. We'll weigh, we'll weigh all those.
Uh, two, the applicant should consider looping or connecting to the water main on College Highway as opposed to a single feed off Tannery Road. There is a larger water main on College Highway with higher available flows than the main on Tannery Road. A sole connection to the smaller main off Tannery Road may limit developments that require large water.
It would likely, you know, so it's precision manufacturing or something, you know, office-related, again, it will be a minimal user. Um, if it's a larger. Manufacturing type of use, we certainly do that, and frankly, I don't think that is a bad idea regardless of the water quality and flow.
Uh, three, the applicant should consider connecting to the municipal sewer system along the rail trail, which is approximately a thousand feet east of this parcel. This would require an easement through flooding property. Um, is that, I mean, is that on the table at all for a consideration?
As far as I'm concerned, I think it should be. Uh, I can't speak to whether or not that is on the table based on who the potential purchaser or user of, of each of the lots would be. I'll talk to Mr. Westgaleek about that, um, to see if, is, I think it's a lot, what we were going to be able to do with our lot of private was to bring sewers to College Highway and service some folks up in that. That's, that's a nice thing to be able to do. I don't think it's a lot, you know, a huge deal if, you know, the town were to participate or somehow gets there. Uh, it's a nice thing to have on College Highway for those businesses.
Yeah, I just didn't know whether he's had direct conversations with, you know. Red Wilwood's or, you know, I think that's where the easement would need to be, right over the Red Wilwood's property.
Uh, I think we make it all the way to. I think the bike trails right here. Right? I think we could get there without, can you, without? I believe so, I will confirm that, I believe we can.
Okay, and that, and if you can, you know, certainly I think having those conversations directly would be worthwhile, even before you get a purchaser, it's, it's at least started.
I'll, I'll actually, I know Tim's had longstanding, you know, communication with different factions in the town, so, you know, he deserves it, not shy about communicating, so I'll ask him to communicate.
All right, uh, for, uh, per town bylaw, three fifteen twenty-two G, sidewalks are required on both sides of the road unless a waiver is granted by the planning board.
Yeah, our, our school thought is if it's industrial, we wanna encourage, you know, sidewalk, you know, people walking along the roadway with big trucks. Uh, Pat said, if. We wanna keep them off the roadway, if there's big trucks, so just. I guess we can decide that during the definitive, but, you know, it's not, it's inconsequential in a way, we just didn't think it was a great idea.
But, Mr. Chairman, did you say they hadn't submit waivers before the definitive plan was submitted?
I do believe we have a waiver for that.
For the sidewalk, you've asked for a waiver?
I don't think you do. I think you just have it for the, uh.
It's the confidence. So I would like to respectfully request a waiver for sidewalks.
And then you would be able to contribute to the revolving account.
Not me, but.
No. Did you bring your checkbook? No.
Yeah, so I, I'm, we can certainly accept that representation if you could just submit a revised waiver. That would be lovely.
Great.
We'll keep going through this in case any other waivers come up. Um, five, the plan incorrectly lists Henry Fitas as the property owner of. The parcel to the southeast of this parcel. The parcel is still owned by the Red Wilwood's family. Uh, update that, I believe, if EPW will withhold comment on the proposed drainage system until further details are provided and subsequent planned submissions. Certainly understood. Um. From the police department, um, uh, not seeing anything in the plans about a sidewalk, um, and didn't see anything about a stop sign either. Um, I'll let you address that, Rob.
Yeah, we would certainly have a stop sign at the, uh, the curb cut back onto Tannery. Again, sidewalk, yeah, that's a good, although.
Okay, uh, and no comments from, uh, no objection from the, the, um, building inspector. Um, about this. All right. So with that, did I miss any jump? I get them all? Okay. Before we turn to the board, let me just, um. So the waivers. Requested would be, uh, the, um, plan content. Uh, what it's, it's scale and what have you. Uh, you're using one inch equals a hundred feet, uh, in your, in your plans, and then the second waiver would be, uh. I think it's probably no sidewalks, right, and then you can kind of.
Limit sidewalks.
Right, and then you can move up from, from there as necessary. Okay, so those are the two waivers. Uh, any others? I'll ask again at the end, but, anything else? All right. All right, um. Just give me one second. Uh, actually, why not, is there any other board questions or comments before we open it up? Nothing, okay. Uh, any town officials have any questions or comments? Go live first. We'll go on Zoom next. Yeah, you wanna, um, maybe just close out of the screen for now. Uh, anybody on Zoom have any questions or comments? Okay. Um, I just wanted to look at your. Easement covenant and restriction sheet here to see if there was anything that needed to come up. Okay. I don't see it. Okay. All right, um. So, um. For. The obligation. To. Discuss and provide tentative approval modification or disapproval. So.
Boss. Mr. Chairman, uh, looking at chapter three fifteen, the, uh, item C tentative Approval. The planning board may give such preliminary plan, its tentative approval, disapproval, or approval with modifications. Such approval does not constitute approval of the subdivision, but does facilitate the procedure in securing final approval of the definitive plan. So I guess because it's a public hearing, we'd have to close the public hearing and then render a decision. And it says we may give preliminary plan, approval, disapproval, or approval with modification.
All right, and, and I guess my, my question was poorly worded, and, and if you, if you have any, let me know, but I was just wondering if there's any questions about the process or anything about. That process that anybody, you know, wants to discuss before we close the hearing and move on to the actual discussion vote.
Because we were advised to have the public hearing twice then, actually. We'll have another public hearing for the definitive plan?
Correct, yeah, that'll be, it's an entirely separate application and, and public here. So, um, all right, then do I hear a motion to? All right. Then do I hear a motion to close the public hearing on the preliminary plan? Marcus Phelps, so move. Do I hear a second?
Phil, give me a second.
Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye. Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil, give me a rye.
It's something, aye.
Dave's good, aye.
So now, again, the tentative approval, disapproval, or approval with modifications. Anybody have anything to discuss about that? Any thoughts? I mean, I'm on the get started on.
What, what's the format then? Do we have an actual decision that's going to be written that we vote on?
Yeah, I don't think you need to support it with any kind of decision in this, because it's a preliminary plan. I think you just have to give it a sort of, you know, thumbs up, down, or with conditions. But again, I think it's more just out of a bunch of caution, holding it as a public hearing so that all the logistics that go along with a public hearing are done and everybody has all this stuff, there's no issues. So. But so I think we can actually condense this down into a voting, whatever, great decision. So. I mean, I, you know, it's, it's, it's a bare bones plan. It's just the concept of having a best or a office park there. You know, it's not from that basic plan that jumps out at me. It's be problematic. I don't see any modifications that you put into this limited plan. So, you know, my information would be the tentative approval and, and sort of wait for. Okay. Do I hear a motion to grant tentative approval to the preliminary plan for six eighty six College Highway? Yes, Rob.
You voted on the waivers?
Yeah, I said I'm gonna do that.
Way at the end. How many waivers?
It takes, it takes a village.
With waivers, with how many waivers?
No, we gotta vote on, we gotta specifically vote on the waivers so that. Yeah. All right. So do I hear a motion to waive section three fifteen eleven B one and allow for a scale of one inch to a hundred feet to be used? Marcus Phelps, so move. Do I hear a second?
Phil, give me a second.
Roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil, give me a rye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's gonna, aye.
Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion to waive section three fifteen twenty two G to require, which requires sidewalks on both sides of the road and allow for no sidewalks to be denied? Marcus Phelps, so move. Do I hear a second?
Phil, give me a second.
Well, this is, so this is, let me be clear and I, my understanding of it is because it's the preliminary plan and you're putting in the waivers, voting on the waivers based on this plan, the definitive plan is going to come in as a complete separate plan in which you can, you can, I believe, it looks like, I don't think you have to accept that waiver for that definitive plan. I don't believe, but Doug, you're shaking your head a little bit, but you, I could be wrong.
They're gonna design to what, to what you expect. I hear what Dave's saying.
I.
Because if you waive it, you could always waive it later again in the plan and then you could secure the funds for the sidewalk fund too. If you waive it now, I don't know if you're gonna be in a place to ask for it under the special permit negotiation process. This is preliminary.
I don't see a need for sidewalks in industrial area.
No, no, hold on. I, I just gotta think through. I gotta think through that. Give me a second. Hold on. Let me just look. I can't remember if it is, Doug, you, so you think it is?
I think you could give them a waiver and then, and then if you want to have to put it back in, then you have to ask to have it put back in. Rob's right on that. I think if you want, so if you grant the waiver now, I believe at the definitive plan stage, you can also, you may, you choose to also grant the waiver. But if you don't grant it now, I don't think you can. So it gives you the option in the definitive.
Correct. That's what I understood it to be, is that
That makes sense.
It's not just that you have to bring it up here. We have to grant it here for it to be able to be put into place in the definitive. And so all we're doing is voting on the waiver based on this submitted plan. Certainly it's going to be changed and not in significant ways. On a definitive, it usually is. Including the tenants and type of use that are being proposed there. So. Yeah, I mean, I think in, we can phrase it this way, which is, do I hear a motion to?
So I'll withdraw my first motion.
Yes.
And we'll make another motion.
Yes. All right, just give me one second. Do I hear a motion for a waiver of section three fifteen twenty two G, which would allow under the plan as submitted currently to not have sidewalks put into this particular plan. But, you know, with no, with no specified use of the, of the parcels. Do I hear a motion? So that keeps our option up for I, right? Is that? Then I'll, yes. Dave's been a some. Do I hear a second? Do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil, give me a rye.
Okay, so that was the waiver. Do I hear a motion to grant tentative approval to the preliminary plan for six eighty six College Highway?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
Do I hear a second?
Phil, give me a second.
We're all called out. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil, give me a rye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's gonna, aye.
Okay. All right. So that's all set.
Thank you.
Yes. You got keys, right? How are you? Good. All right. So yeah, we just go down to the conference room.
People have to connect.
I'm gonna just, he's gonna go on. I'm gonna, he's gonna go on. That's all right. We can, he can go on. All right. So. We are going to go quickly into executive session and then come back for the remainder of the agenda. So I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to litigation. And declaring that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect.
We're leaving. You can stay.
We're gonna go down to a conference room and come back. So just so you all know, declare that open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the bodies and to reconvene in open session thereafter. We'll take a roll call vote. Or actually, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps, so move.
David Sutton, aye.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote. Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave's gonna, aye.
All right.
So we're keeping separate minutes?
Yes. That is fine to raise. I appreciate that.
Hello? Yes, I can. I'm sorry.
Do a roll call vote, Michael's already eye.
Marcus Phelps, eye.
Justin Ryan.
It's not an eye.
Dave, can I?
So that is all set.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, uh, one thirty-eight, our hillside road, continue public hearing. For the subdivision special permits, I plan to propose stormwater management permits. Just so we have a clean record, um, I can only speak for myself, but I'm certain Mr. Sutton has as well. Listened to the Zoom recording from last meeting and submitted an affidavit regarding this public hearing.
Yes.
Okay. So, um. Okay, fully, uh, do we, we don't have any new comments?
Something from Chief Anderson.
That's cool.
We did. Uh, hold on one second. It's the dream one, all right. Uh, let me just start off with one comment before I turn to you, Philippe, um, comment from Russ Anderson. I reviewed the new plans and agree with the proposed system plan, uh, we will need to confirm connection sizes and final design plans or at installation. Uh, thank you for these considerations and improving the safety of the development, Russ Anderson, Fire Chief, stop at part. Okay, go ahead.
All right, for the record, believe favor, uh, Red Associates, uh, here on continuation for the, uh, proposed five block subdivision called Magnolia State or Magnolia Homes. Again, just a continuation from the last meeting, at the last meeting, we sort of transitioned this project, you know, into my, uh, my world, onto my plate. Uh, so I just wanted to, um, I guess, update the board as to where we are in it and addressing comments. Um, at the last meeting, we had, uh, we had a few outstanding comments that were from Randy Brown at DPW in regard to, um, Stormwater Basin and, and some other, uh, pretty minor items. Since then, we have updated and resubmitted all of those documents, um, we have, uh, so Randy has all that information. We do not have responses back from Randy yet, as to whether they, you know, if he's satisfied with how we address them. Um, but there are a couple of things that we can, you know, update the board as to what changed on the plan, uh, very minor changes that came about as, uh, as we addressed Randy's comments. Uh, the basin, uh, got a little bit larger, we moved on from what, uh, you know, not to get too technical, but the rainfall events that we had, uh, were under the previous regulations have been sort of updated to the NOAA Atlas, um, fourteen plus numbers. So basically, uh, we updated, it just increased the rainfall that we designed to, is, is, uh, quite simply. Uh, basically got a little bit larger, about three feet wider, moved the outlet to where it's shown now, or as previously was on the backside of the basin. Uh, we added, um, as you, as the chair just read, we added the cistern, um, to the plan, um, which is just a fire department comment, so these will, you'll have basically a source of water for this subdivision and so in the surrounding area. With, uh, with the addition of those systems. Um, other than that, I believe there was some discussion in regard to the sidewalk, whether that was, uh, uh, whether we were going to, uh, maintain the sidewalk on the subdivision or we were going to have, uh, contribution to the sidewalk fund, move the sidewalk. Um, so though, like, we were, you know, the last few outstanding items, short of hearing back from Randy and his comments.
And what's there?
Yeah, the last.
Where did? Do you guys have a position on the sidewalk as far as? I just, and I, again, I listened to it, um, but, you know, just want to make sure where that's, so as far as your position on it.
Um, I mean, it's, it's a five block subdivision, it's a short subdivision, there's sidewalks as currently shown just on one side, there's no sidewalks on hillside roads, so it's really just to get, you know, someone maybe, um, towards the front, um, it's shown on the plan, although, do you have any?
I mean, I.
Two, I mean, all the way around seems a little overkill, but.
No, agreed, and I, um, I mean, I do wonder whether. Um, how does it end?
It ends at the open space access, so, so there's an easement.
No, I'm sorry, the other, the other end.
Well, the other end is at the, uh, close, you know, closer to the intersection with hillside. We kind of return back to the street at that point.
Goes back to the street.
It goes actually back to the street.
Back to Magnolia, yeah, does a ninety back.
Yeah, okay. And about how far, you know, I guess by thinking about it is, right, I mean, the only real use for this is going to be kids walking down to the, to the street for the bus, right? So that's really what it needs to be designed for, I think you brought it up last time, um, so. You know, I think having one side, it's fine, gets them down there, um, but then you got to think about that end and what that's going to look like, and you, you know, obviously you don't want them necessarily too close to the road, uh, but you want them to be, I guess, visible, uh, in some way, or have, you know. So, uh, you know, about how far that is from the road?
Just scale, but you're looking at about.
Yeah, approximately twenty feet.
Yeah.
All right.
And you requested originally waiver for one side of the street, so.
Yes.
The only other thing was the double role of coniferous trees on those two property lines, where there's residences currently.
Here.
Yeah, offset, yeah, another role.
Yes. Certainly, add another role.
And not white buns.
All right, so, refresh my memory fully, is this in conservation or not in conservation?
It is in conservation, it was heard last night, but they had continued to wait for response, Randy's response.
Right, okay. All right, so, any board questions or comments? Okay, any public officials have any questions or comments?
I just have a question, how do you, how does a cistern be maintained? How is it checked that it is always full?
Good question.
I just have no idea.
I don't either.
There's a monitoring system and you actually fill them with pool water trucks.
But who's, I mean, I guess it must ultimately make its way into homeowners association document or covenant or something like that, that they're responsible for it. And is the fire department do inspections on it?
I would assume so, I've never been involved.
Because if it's going to be in, I don't know if that's going to be in the town right away, the town's going to end up owning it, or it's going to be part of the homeowners association, they, they end up owning it?
It's definitely in the, it's definitely homeowners.
The tanks are on, they're on private property. But, you know, there's like a fire department connection, similar to what you see on building, what I've seen in the past, and it sticks up out of the ground, it's just a source of water.
Well, certainly, right, I mean.
Site well, or anything like that.
So, yeah, we'll check with Russ and see exactly logistics, it's got to make its way into the legal documents down the line, as far as, you know, responsibility, so.
Thank you.
Good question. Any other town officials have any questions or comments? Any public questions or comments? I see none live, anybody on Zoom? Okay.
Is Jason Fiore?
No, that's your, that's your cursor. Yeah, Jason's just gonna have his hand raised for the entire meeting.
Oh, yeah, did I have my hand raised?
All right, so, where do we have the agenda for the next? So. When's the next conservation meeting that you're on for? I'm sorry? You don't?
I don't know.
Two weeks from yesterday?
Yes.
All right, so. How come the director, Bill, is out?
Well, didn't like the calendars, I think.
I think Professor Engineering had a very nice calendar that I brought in, thank you.
I picked up some of the names. They're gonna meet before we meet on the twenty eighth, right?
Well, that's what I'm at, that's what I'm asking, is whether.
The next conservation meeting as of last night is now going to be switching to Tuesdays, and it's going through the twenty first.
Twenty first. So you were.
Ryan, I have it as twenty. So, could you continue us to the twenty eighth?
But either way, it doesn't matter.
Yeah, we'll say that.
All right. So why don't we put it on for. Sorry. Why don't we just put it on for seven thirty-five? Do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Just a second.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Even Sutton, aye.
Dave's been aye.
Okay. Next, eight fifteen, Sunnyside Ranch Estates, continue public hearing, a potential imposition of new security under Mass General laws, chapter eighty-one, section forty-one U. Can you give me ten? Start with reading a letter from Tim Ryan of Even Plan Again and Cohen, I will, though, at least say that I think we've had discussions between Mr. Attorney Ryan and Attorney Tanner since this time, so I'm not sure if this is still his position, but let me read it, stated May twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-two. Please be advised that I represent the Sunnyside Ranch Estates Property Owners Association, and this letter is in response to the public hearing notice from May twenty-four, twenty twenty-two, to consider the imposition of new security under Mass General law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one U, upon the subdivision developers at Sunnyside Ranch Estates, Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC and the Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC. The Association represents fifty-three lot owners at the Ranch Golf Course, and the overwhelming majority of its members support any meaningful effort to get the developers, and if need be, the principals thereof to fund the costs to complete the roadwork. The essentially undisputed facts show that the roadway specifically Overlook Lane and Sugar Maple Lane were never fully or adequately completed. The town filed suit last year against the developers, the town now seeks to compel the developers, as well as the Property Owners Association, to cover the cost to complete the roadwork. The May twentieth, twenty-two report, the DPW Director Randall Brown reveals that the pavement shows signs of failure along the entire section of Overlook Lane and Sugar Maple Lane with moderate to severe alligator cracking and rambling in some locations. Mr. Brown's report details extensive issue and deviations in the drainage system, as well as incomplete or inadequate sidewalks. Equally concerning is Mr. Brown's repair slash completion estimate of five hundred sixty thousand to complete the work. The Property Owners Association represents fifty-two different families, all of our members purchase based on the representation and understanding that developers will be providing adequate and compliant roadways, sidewalks and drainage systems, it is clear that the developers did not comply with or need the project specifications, the Property Owners Association to support the planning board's efforts to require the developers to post new work for the security to cover the cost of completing the unfinished and inadequate work. All right. So, anything from the board before I open it up for public comments? Okay, any town officials have any comments? Oh, and actually, yeah, why don't we just, so, and these will be available for review, these are other documents that were submitted, one is a June twenty-first, two thousand thirteen letter from David Schreier, submitted to the planning board. He's an attorney representing Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC. The others are a letter from Michael Schneider, dated September seventh, two thousand and ten, he represents Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC, and it, and at the minutes from the planning board dated September seventh of two thousand and ten, so those are certainly available for. So the minutes are, let's see, September seventh, two thousand and ten. December twenty-eighth, two thousand and eleven. July second, two thousand and thirteen, December third, two thousand and thirteen. And that's, okay. So, those will be in the file, if anybody wants to review them, though, the minutes, I think, are online anyways, or potentially online, I don't know if that age, online. All right. It certainly can be requested from the town. Any town officials? Have any comments? Okay, any public comments? Go ahead, use name and address, please.
Jim Sullivan, sixteen, we will be running. And I'm the president of the Homeowners Association. I just wanted to speak a little bit about clarification of names, we have Sunnyside, and we have Sunnyside. So we have Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC, which is Pinnacle LLC, which is Peter Pappas. We have Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC, which is Peter Clark. And then we have who is the Sunnyside Ranch Estates Property Owners Association, the POA. Well, from two thousand and one through two thousand and twelve, this was Peter Clark, Sunnyside Ranch LLC. He was both the president and the developer, developer of the Sunnyside Ranch Estates. David Hall was a treasurer, Peter Clark was the clerk. Peter Clark sold his final four lots in seventeen and eighteen. In September of two thousand and twelve, Peter Clark issued a certificate of president. And on that, on that month, we basically had a meeting, and we got together as homeowners, and we had to vote amongst ourselves, pick people out of the room, and you're going to be the president, you're going to be the treasurer, and so on. And so we basically were given the keys that day, and really no, no really clue how to drive at that point. So, as of September two thousand and twelve, our understanding was, everything is fine, I mean, the neighborhood's going great. We had, you know, the certificate of president two thousand and twelve, and I don't know if you guys need a copy of this, I have copies of the certificate of president.
Thank you. This is the second page.
And what I, what I basically gave the homeowners, because again, they're, they're very, we're not developers, we don't know a thing about roadways. So I gave the, I gave the POA four documents, time, the certificate of the president, the Westfield News article from two thousand and eleven, the Westfield News article from two thousand and thirteen, and then I gave them a covenant in lieu of bond from November of two thousand and one, which is the exact method that the Greens is using right now. The Greens is right next to us, they have a covenant in lieu of bond, it's worth about a dollar. So, I've been watching the Greens, things are going actually really well there, and I watched the inspection process, and I watched a couple lots we're going to hold, because, you know, there's work to be done. So I've been watching that, and it's, it's really cool. So as of July two thousand and thirteen, a year after we took over, the town of Southwick and Peter Pappas has presented the public with a premium place to live. Securities are in place based on town officials, Marcus Phelps, Doug Muglin, Ross Terry, they have all stated, we have a covenant in place. We're protected. Peter Pappas also stated, I'm a, I'm committed to make sure it's outstanding because I live there, I'm a local developer. So, we got the keys, we got everything, we live in a premium neighborhood, for sure, with a premium golf course. I'm hoping you guys are inspecting my home when we have electrical, when we have our foundation put in, I'm hoping nobody's building something up in a private neighborhood, and there's no inspection process because there's gates. We hope to be treated like any other neighborhood. We all put our pants on, one leg at a time. We're not any special, worse, better. But the safety of my people is dependent on the infrastructure, so if you don't put my foundation in right, my house is going to crumble in a couple of years. If you don't do the infrastructure below the roadways correctly, you're, you're telling us that. Well, we don't want to inspect that, and we don't care about the safety of anybody. It's important, inspections are the most important part, we pay over half a million dollar in taxes, we don't ask for anything. In thirty years, when our roads start crumbling, they're not going to do a thing for you, but we wrote that. We understand that, we don't want that, we're going to take care of our roads. When our roads start looking like hillside, we're going to fix them. I mean, it's just, that's what it's going to be, we can't, we can't rely, we wrote that, we have it in our covenant. We're not coming to you to fix our roads in the future. You hand us the inspected process, good roads, we're going to take care of them for the rest of our life. That was the deal. Somebody, again, if a bad developer has to be, you know, if, if there's additional securities that are needed, then, then they're needed. But this is a process that these people had nothing to do with, they didn't profit off anything, they didn't profit off the roadways. When times were great, they weren't making money off this development, and when times were bad, they were just continually moving on. This is business. So, again, if you have any questions for me?
My single question would be, what is your position on what we're here to consider, which is putting security in place?
Thousand percent, thousand percent. I mean, we feel that the town, in thirteen, the town was spot on. The developer in thirteen, from thirteen to eighteen, we don't know what happened. But we're, we're only an association, we don't track the developer, we don't release lots, so we don't know what's done or what's not done. This is all being done between a business and a municipality. We feel we have a bad businessman, Peter Clark did everything he said he was going to do. Their Pappas came in and didn't finish everything, and now he expects us to take care of it, he thinks we're going to finish the roads. He's claiming the covenant means you maintain the road, so I gave him to you like that, you just have to maintain it from here on. That's his position. And we're pissed off, yeah?
Any other public comments?
Yeah, Michael Martin, I am a president of twenty-two Ranch Park Road, I am a taxpayer, first and foremost, at the town of Southwick, I represent myself, my wife, and probably fifty-one or maybe fifty other taxpayers. Let's remove the Sunnyside Ranch Estates POA homeowners property or association, and let's just talk about what we're getting for our taxes. Okay? The DPW report that was provided by Mr. Brown is superb. Superb, it's a very detailed analysis and assessment of the current road situation of Overlook and Sugar Maple. Where was that due diligence done before the covenants were released?
Sir, sir, I don't, I don't want to sit here and, and, and have a lengthy discussion about what happened back in two thousand and thirteen. None of us were on the board back in two thousand and thirteen, and so, it, it, all we're here to do is figure out whether we should impose security on the developers going forward for purposes of the ongoing litigation.
But you're proposing putting securities on the homeowners.
We are not actually, in any way, shape, or form, we've never, we've never proposed that, and it is not part of the notice, you can read the notice if you want, the notice is to put security on the two developers. They are Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC and the Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC. That is what the purpose of this hearing is for, whether to impose new security under Mass General laws, chapter forty- Whether to impose new security under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U. Upon the subdivision developers. At the Ranch Estates, which are Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC and the Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC, those two.
So as a taxpayer and a resident at the ranch. As Mr. Focal asked at the last hearing, we are indemnified, is that what?
No, you're not indemnified.
Okay, so. So what are, where, where, well, I'm just asking a question, where are we at risk, what's the risk to, as an individual taxpayer, I'm just asking that question.
So. I'm going to explain it the way I understand it.
Okay.
And then I would say. The homeowner association does have an attorney who has submitted a letter. He could certainly provide legal advice and ramifications to the homeowner association rather than myself. But here's how I understand it. There's ongoing litigation, right? The town of Southwick at the request of, frankly, I think the homeowner association. Brought litigation, put everybody in the pool, and let's figure this out. One of the options has been that you can impose new security. On the developers of. That particular section of the ranch. And so we have entertained that and. Put a public hearing forward to determine whether or not to put new security. Onto those developers, such as, you know, if you take the number five hundred sixty thousand, which is what Randy Brown proposed. You know, a bond in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars, or cash amount of five hundred sixty thousand, whatever it's. So, and, and they would be required to put up that bond or face consequences if they don't. That's all we're here for. Part of the litigation, again, as I understand it, but I would defer to your attorney is to figure out. Who's liable to who and, you know, whether the town is in any way liable, that's a different issue. This is simply a very discreet issue about whether to impose new security. Onto those developers, that is it, anything else is being taken care of in the litigation, to my understanding, okay?
That's good, so that's the town's position right now, because you opened, the town didn't have any comments. The public officials didn't have any comments in that, we're just telling you what our concerns are, where our questions are. Because as some of us understood, based upon the notice I received last week or a couple of weeks ago for the last town hearing was that. I could potentially be responsible for putting up my share of the five hundred sixty thousand dollar security you all are looking for. To, you know, for, for, for the problem to be resolved, that's as a, as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about that.
So again, let me just clarify. I, I want to be careful because I don't want to get any kind of legal opinion. Just so you know, I am an attorney, that's why I'm very careful about making sure that nothing is being interpreted as my legal opinion, because I'm sitting here as a member of the planning board. But. The issue of whether the homeowners association. Would be on the hook for. Whatever cost to repair it, we chose to do so. Or were ordered to do so, is. An issue in the litigation. Okay, that is to be decided by the litigation or by settlement of the litigation or however it's decided. All we are doing here, and I, my personal opinion is I think it's to your benefit, is. Choosing to put new security on those developers. You know, so that at least there's something out there. That they may be required to put up, or may order them to put up. And that would potentially, depending on how that litigation comes out. Provide a source of funds to pay for this rather than having the homeowner association pay for it. Okay, so I think this discrete issue is to your benefit, the other stuff is to be decided and I can't speak for that. If that makes sense.
If we took a vote, I would imagine that you'd probably see a bunch of hands go up to say, absolutely, let's put the security onus on the developers of the ranch estates. Indemnify the residents, the taxpayers.
First of all.
I got it, I got it, I got it, but, but if that's what we're here to, to adjudicate or to decide on, then let's put it out the book.
But the identification is not going to be voted on by court, it's, it's, it's. For a number of reasons, but it's not being voted on by the court. We're here to vote on whether to impose new security, okay? All right.
And what's our involvement in pulling on new security?
Make public comments and then we vote on it. Sir in the red shirt back there. Sorry. We'll, we'll come to you, you're next.
Okay. My name is Frank Campbell. My wife Beverly and I live in five Overlook Lane, also known as lot twenty-six. And according to Department of Public Works, it's where the sidewalk ends. I just wanted to say that. We were the second. Buyers of the lots up in the Pinnacle Estates. Bought our lot in August to September two thousand twelve. We moved in. In November of two thousand thirteen, we're the second residence on the street. At the time, we negotiated buying the lots. And I've just become aware of the articles that were. Printed in the Westfield News, and they pretty much. Summarized what we were told. That. This was going to be a first-class development. That the roads were going to be completed, sidewalks were going to be completed. And everything was going to be brought up in town, standard specifications, I'm not sure what the language should be. As you well know, that hasn't happened. I understand that somehow or other. Pinnacle LLC or Peter Pappas, to me, they're the same. Was given some type of release from town saying the roads are all good. As the Department of Public Works has indicated, that is not the case. So I would urge you to impose new securities on the developers. And. From my perspective, and that's nothing personal, I know you said that you guys weren't here at the time, back in whenever. But. You are the town, right now, tonight, as far as we're concerned. Whether you were here. Before or will be here in the future, that doesn't matter to me, you are the town. And that's the way I think most of us look at it, because we're not, you know, town. Professionals as far as our town statutes and laws and so on, thank you very much.
Yes, hi, I'm Bruce Tomaso, I live on six on New Lane. I applaud this initiative, okay, I truly do. And I applaud this planning board for even considering. I particularly applaud the initiative to go ahead and get Randy Brown's report, because for the first time ever, we have a benchmark. We've always been struggling with the notion of what it means to complete the road, what a completed road is. And the benchmark in Randy Brown's report was the subdivision plan approved back in two thousand and two, whenever it was approved, okay? And that was his benchmark for saying, it's either there or it's not there, okay? And he did an excellent job of doing that. I think Jim's point earlier was, would that that same kind of inspection had been done throughout the process? Every time lots were released for sale under the terms of that covenant, would that that inspection had been done, all right? We would, we wouldn't be here tonight, we wouldn't even have this issue before us, right? But nevertheless, I still applaud the initiative that's here, I have one basic question, however. My understanding is that this was a town council recommendation that the planning board consider this initiative. And I'm just wondering why town council made this recommendation to the planning board?
If, if, I guess I'm not sure. What you mean by that?
This wasn't, this wasn't something the planning board gend up itself, right? Town council asked you to consider this initiative.
So. I'm going to be a little careful because town council. Were engaged in litigation and there is some degree of attorney client privilege there, but. So thi- this is not something that would be. Within any kind of. Purview of a planning board as they're just sitting here, it's not part of our bylaws, it's not part of. You know, any regulations we have, this is a specific general law that came up in the course of this litigation. And was discussed with us, you know, in the course of litigation, so it's something that is. Coming out of the litigation being brought to us, it's not something that we would normally have in our disposal and have dealt with before.
Well, it certainly would generate normally on your agenda.
Correct.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other, sir?
Name is Dale Sizwick, I live at nineteen Sunnyside Road with my wife and her man since two thousand and ten. My comment is very brief.
Yes. My comment is very brief. Any other public comments? All right, and I'm looking at the folks here, let me check on Zoom, is there anybody who has a public comment on Zoom? Okay. Anything else on board? All right, do I hear a motion to close the public hearing?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second? Your roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Okay. Okay. So I'll open it to the board for discussion as to. Where your headset and what. If someone wants to put out a proposal to vote on or to discuss, please do so. Or I can do so if you wish.
Rated a little better than we could.
You have the number, I think you have the number.
So.
Randy was five sixty.
So I guess the starting place with the. As a number.
Yep.
For security. I don't, we don't have anything else but Randy's. You know, it seems reasonable to me, but I'm obviously.
Looked at his memo again, didn't he, I thought he, he rounded it.
No, he went to five sixty.
I think that's where.
No, it's five sixty. Five fifty-two to five sixty, I think, whatever it's. If I remember.
Mr. Brown, of course, did. Six hundred thousand after, I'm calling some legal costs or whatever.
A ten percent increase would be six sixteen.
But putting that aside, as far as the buffer in, or legal costs and what have you. Is there any discussion or comments on Randy's calculations and number he reached?
Training, which is excellent to have a DPW director with that expertise, so I would certainly.
Okay.
Agree with his valuation.
All right, so. If we.
I apologize, clearly a difference, so. Okay, carry on.
I mean, this is meant to be security for the. Construction itself, it does have a construction contingency in there. It puts it up at five sixty. So. Is there any reason to treat one developer differently than the other developer for these purposes? So.
Will be later decided in the vacation.
So. We would. What I'm hearing is that there would be a. Bond. Well, I guess we can talk about the former security a minute, but let's just say security imposed on. Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars. Security imposed upon Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars. Both of which would be equally responsible for it, obviously, you know, the total only needs to be five hundred sixty thousand dollars, right? They will be jointly separately liable for. Or the security. Do we have any thoughts on the form of security? I thought we couldn't specify. Oh, that's true. Yes, that's true, all right, so we got to say the security in the amount of. That's right. Thank you. Got it, all right, so hold on one second. Okay. So then do I hear a motion? To. Require. Or to impose. New security under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U. On Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC. In the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars. Which will be. The total amount of security to be provided by any. Any amount which security is imposed. That's what I was going to do, and let me just think about whether, I want to do it separately, so. Let's do this, so. We'll do it as three votes, do I hear a motion to impose. New security under Mass General Laws, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U upon. Sunnyside Ranch Estates LLC in the amount of five hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Marcus Phelps, so move, do I hear a second? A roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye. And it's something, aye. Dave's been aye.
Right here, a motion to impose new security under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one U. Upon Pinnacle Estates at the Ranch LLC in the amount of five hundred sixty thousand dollars.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye. Something, aye. Dave's been aye.
And then. I guess we'll do this under motion, I just can't think of the way to do it, I, because I want to do it as separate motions, so do I hear a motion to. To cap the amount of security to be applied to this at five hundred sixty thousand dollars, whether it comes from one or both of those entities.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Do I hear a second?
Roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye. Dave's been aye.
Okay.
And we don't specify the form of security.
Right.
Just to secure.
Correct, all right. Okay. Eight thirty PM, in planning board time, one forty-one Congamon Road. We. Continue public hearing. We all know what it's. We all know what it's. All right, we'll let the folks first and then we.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you being here. Thanks for coming.
All right, so one forty-one Congammon, uh.
We just, I think we opened the hearing. You see the input.
From what was originally submitted?
Yes.
Yeah, these two things here.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry, since the last, it should be in my folder? Okay. All right, so um. Rob, I'm assuming you're handling this. Um, let me read in um. A comment from the. Lake Management Committee, and then we will turn to you and go through what you need to go through. So um. This is dated June sixth. Lake Management Committee members have had numerous discussions about the subject site during its regular meetings over the past several months. Um, below is a summary of the apparently unresolved issues regarding the subject site and special permit issued by the planning board. Though I. With my own aside, I would remind us that we are here for a limited purpose on this public hearing. Uh, one, LMC unanimously unanimously supports transient docks with seventy-five foot maximum length. But is unanimously against the addition of any marina docks and therefore has strong concerns about parking space and specifically needed to support the proposed marina. Two, the proposed one hundred and fifty foot long docks as shown on the plan will interfere with the access to and egress from the middle slash south pond interlake culvert. In the existing navigation lane and will also interfere with the normal counterclockwise flow of boat traffic in this normal turning area for tubing and water scheme. In addition. Uh, town of Southwick bylaw chapter. I think there's something missing here, um, to E, if you flex three twenty-three CMR regulations. Requires headway speed when within a hundred and fifty, assume that's feet of a marina boat launching facility. This further exacerbates issues with an already tight normal navigation area. Uh, with a, there's a map attached for anybody who wishes to look at this. Uh, according to Michelle Pratt, citizens restoring Congammon President CRC is planning to fly a drone to GIS locating over the three hundred foot headway speed area. While boats are placed within the hundred and fifty foot proposed end of docks and other boats are using the interlake culvert and operating within the three hundred foot headway speed area. This data will be presented to the DEP once the chapter ninety-one application is officially received by DEP circulated by DEP for comment. Three, the site plan needs to show winter storage locations for docks that must be removed from the water annually before December first, they may be stored on the shoreline as long as they are out of the water. Four, LMC does not understand how a license can be granted by the town for use of state right-of-way land that is within nineteen forty-seven state highway layout. For parking to support marina or restaurant. Uh, the state highway layout needs to be clearly defined as such on RLA site plan, parking spaces within the. State highway layouts land accordingly cannot be permitted per mass DOT, also per mass DOT land and other features, i.e. granite curve, HMA berm, grassy areas shown on the plan cannot be altered. In said state highway layout area without master OTs express written permission. Five, some of the parking spaces shown on the RLA site plan are within the town of Southwick bylaw chapter one eighty-five thirty. C required fifteen foot setback which LMC believes should trigger the need for variance from the Board of Appeals. Six, the proposed milling and lube asphalt are not a stable surface and accordingly this. Fryable loose material and any associated contaminants will likely migrate on into the onsite stormwater system. And on. Into the waters of Congammon, as a side note, how will parking lots striking be maintained on the tribal milling surface? Seven, sometime in past one forty-one Congammon Road parking area catch basins and roof stormwater discharges were connected to town's storm stormwater management system. Deep sumps and catch basin structures on the one forty-one site are not present, which will allow solids, oils, floatables and other contaminants to flow into the town system. Further, there are no hoods on outlets and catch basin structures which will allow oils and floating objects to enter town system. Which ultimately outfalls into mill pond, LMC is concerned about the potential adverse impact on Congammon water quality. Eight, ensure that any connections to town stormwater system are removed and that stormwater is duly and properly managed on site. Any outfall into Congammon from this site must be designed and permitted as a new outfall. Parking area stormwater should be properly managed on site and roof stormwater should be infiltrated on site, so it's not the impact of water Congammon. Nine, LMC is also concerned about the potential for accident release of sewage effluent into adjacent. South pond due to the proximity of the system to the waters of South pond. Are there dual pumps and a wet well high level alarm system on a sanitary sewer pumps, is there backup power for said sanitary sewer pumps? Lake Management Committee here, I request this be read at the next planning board and conservation commission session. Okay, I think that is. It. This is not, this seems like something, I get the information, but we don't need this in the.
It was submitted.
Okay, so um. Number of votes that visit the boat ramp. Hello, this is from Michelle, no, I'm sorry. This is um, different. To Michelle. At. Um, below are the figures that reflect paid launches for the subject calendar years, the two ramps are required to be open twenty-four seven but are not staffed twenty-four seven, accordingly, there are additional unpaid launches that occur. When ramps are not staffed and South ramp is only staffed once we are in the busy summer voting months, as it would cost more to staff. Than the income generated, the following data is based on accounting's LMC. Revolving account launch fees collected for each of the three years noted below, two thousand and nineteen. Six thousand three hundred and seventy-eight paid launches at five dollars per boat launched. Twenty twenty, six thousand two hundred and fifty-two paid launches for at eight dollars per boat launched. Ramp use and fishing tournaments were not permitted per governor's order until mid-May. But ramps were extremely busy thereafter due to COVID restrictions on other public areas and events statewide. The eight dollar per boat launch fee was approved. May seventh, twenty twenty by the Office of Fishing and Boating Access. Twenty twenty-one. Four thousand six hundred and sixty-six paid launches at eight dollars per boat launched, ramp use was down a bit from the crazy peak experienced during the. Period when state boat ramps were permitted to open mid-May twenty twenty, and also there were many fall weather days and weekends where ramps were accordingly not staffed. Um, so that is the information about the boat ramp launches.
Mr. Chair, I do have one more piece of correspondence that.
Yes.
Alive during this meeting from a butter, if you wish, to be.
Uh, sure, go for it.
Shall I, all right, um, this is from Mr. Edward Meech, uh, he resides, I think it's three.
Yes.
Beach Road. Uh, good evening, Mr. Gatter, unfortunately I cannot make a meeting tonight, I'm reiterating my opposition to the exit plan that Mr. Agelston's wanted for the parking lot. Also, I was unaware that this is being discussed tonight, also, why hasn't he discussed this with anyone that's in this neighborhood about his plans? What kind of honest person would try to change already proved plans without speaking to a butters? His plan disrupts everything and everyone on our quiet little one-way street, thank you, Edward Meech.
Okay. Rob, do you have? Anything to add tonight? To present it?
So there was, before I got here, there were four items that I thought I was discussing. The Lake Management Committee letter has a lot in it. A lot of which, based on my understanding and my knowledge of the regulations, is not through jurisdiction. They may be good comments, they may be accurate, or they may be out of their skis a little bit, but. That, you, I would be happy to go through that letter and let you know where I think that flies or. I'm here for the men, I'm few very minor items with an already approved special permit.
So um, my. Feeling is that we are here for a specified public hearing on four items. I've read that letter, my personal opinion is that this is relitigating all the stuff that we could have dealt with in another public here. And. Further, a lot of it is outside, not only the scope, I mean, I I'm not gonna. Take a position on whether it's in the scope of Lake Management Committee, but it's certainly not within the scope of the planning board uh on a lot of this stuff. So um, you know, with that. For instance, I mean, we're not putting locations where the docks need to be stored, uh, we're not. Dealing with, you know, we're not the, we're not the people involved with the right-of-ways and 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 dealing with, you know, what the select board does. We're not dealing with the chapter ninety-one license and what they choose to do or what conservation chooses to do during the course of those hearings, which I understand is. At least started at this point in time, uh, because the application has been put in. So um, so again, it's it's, I think it's far outside of what the planning board has to deal with, um, I would. If there's things to add on. The four items that are being addressed in this public hearing. And. You know, I I think. At least, this is my opinion when I listened to it, was that the. The. I guess two things, one is the the sort of. Better refer to it as a planter, because that's what it was, right, but that sort of blocking of light and the transit area onto Beach Road seems to be a a a. Topic for discussion that has, people have offered some opinions on. Um, I don't know, John, did um. Is there any comment from the safety officer about? Wasn't there an issue with the Congammon Road spot about whether that was safe or not and whether?
He did provide initial feedback, um, but I don't believe there was any particular.
What was, he had no comment with.
Yeah, we'll run with that until I find it, if you go, it's a different project.
Uh, fair enough, okay. So um, I mean, the primary one, to my knowledge, is the issue with Beach Road and 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 egress and and blocking headlights and what have you. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add or whether.
Can you just go through the screen before.
It's looks like it's been revised.
Yeah, so we have the revised plan.
Yep.
Revised navigation sketch has been divided to show one hundred and fifty foot offset from closed marinas to help nor straight separation distances from proposed docks. And surrounding lake features, I have a copy of that, to the extent that you feel it's applicable to our discussion tonight, we do have that for the record. Number two is the southwest of the exit on the Beach Road has been relocated orderly for two reasons, A. To cite the exit drive so that is not directly opposite the abutting houses west of Beach Road, minimizing the headlight interference. And B, provide better access to the parking space in the most southwestern corner of the parking lot. Re- and it results in the loss of one parking space in total parking count that been updated to sixty-one parking spaces. Three, proposed fence along Beach Road has been extended to provide screening coverage for the entire length of the parking lot along Beach Road, and number four. The one parking space proximate to the existing sign location near the norly curb cut has been rotated, additional vehicular stripping added so as to reduce potential for interference of cars entering the site from Congammon Road. That's it.
The current. Where it is on on what you just handed it, um, or handed to me, that like this is school, um. Is that exit location on the Beach Road, is that where it historically was, I'm sorry, Jeff. If you know, Rob.
I don't know.
Okay.
Um, so let's see if I can tell.
It was.
The previous exit was a lot larger.
Fair enough, but as far as the location, is it within that?
Has come back, that exit will come out as Ed requested last people, last week, it'll come out right to the sign that says one one, right there.
Between the houses.
Between the houses, yeah, so there's probably a landing layer, yes, I think he referred to the B in the Beach Road, and that's what's coming.
And to your understanding, that's historically where vehicles had exited that part.
That is part of the area in which vehicles used to.
Correct, it's a, it's a smaller footprint, but.
Now it's fourteen, it's thirty-five feet or something.
Okay.
So, yes, it's.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any board comments, questions?
Well, I'll I'll have to speak to a general question that came in last time from Mr. Mueller. And I was not able to respond, I said that the planning board, at least I would be providing response, uh, his comment was about. Marinas and how the planning board would deal with approval or disapproval. And. In in my mind, speaking for myself. And not the whole planning board, we look at each project as they come in and we evaluate them based on their merits. And uh, our decision is focused on the land use, which we have authority to do under chapter one eighty-five. And primarily, we look at adequate parking, and you know, we've spoken or discussed it for hours. On the parking and how many slots, how many spaces for the various slips and and how many spaces for the restaurant. And also traffic flow, so, which we're just addressing now with the exit to Beach Road, so. That's pretty much where the planning board, at least in my experience, has been with with projects that come in, so. If there's a future marina project, uh, we would have to deal with it a- as a project. And uh, you know, there's other things that could be done, and I won't speak about them now, but uh. There's other planning approaches that could be used if if we want to go in that direction or another authority wants to go in that direction, so anyway. I'm I'm quite impressed with the changes that were made to the parking right now, so.
Marcus, I'm gonna jump off on what you just said, because I actually did respond to Eric. Via email. So it was, I listened to the hearing, I didn't realize you raised it at the hearing, um, as a question to be answered, but. To my knowledge, looking at this, there is not a single other property in the town of Southwick that can be developed as a marina. In the business zone down there that has the ability to. Handle a marina and does not already have a chapter ninety-one license, so it is an utterly non-issue. As far as precedent goes, because there is not a single other site that could be developed, there are only fifteen sites in the entire business zone that have water access down there. Most of which are under a quarter of an acre, um, you know, third of an acre, something like that, uh, the ones that are large enough are have, either have, um, marinas on them, have chapter ninety-one licenses like the. Louis V does, um, that does not allow for rentals. Or and then one forty-one, so I mean, that's what we have down there.
And I.
That's it.
And I think we we always focus on the land use as best we can, try to balance.
I certainly agree with what you said, I just, I think it's a, it's a complete. Not issue in this case, because there's no way to have another marina, so um, it's not a precedent-setting issue in this town. Any other board comments? I like the relocation of the exit, I think that's a good solution there. I'm still a little leery about that one parking spot. I think this is kind of out there, it feels like, just kind of hanging out. The empty way a little more that I feel comfortable with, but. Which one? Which one are you?
But then you're gonna get whacked back out.
Yeah. That's for smart cars.
They changed it. It was in a different.
It used to be parallel to the, whatever there is.
I mean, I guess my question, it's still, it's still, it's still kind of, I don't know. Do you need it?
Why was it added?
What?
Two very different questions.
Last time you got to hear you were losing two spaces. Now you're only losing one.
Y'all have a license right now? Is that right from the select board to use it or not have a license? You do have a license?
Yes.
Okay, so you have a license to use those spaces on the lot. It strikes me that you needed. I forget the number that you needed, but you, you had fifty-nine, you went up to sixty-two, then you went back down to sixty-one. If you went back down to sixty, I still think you have enough. I just, I don't, I'm not sure I see the purpose of sort of creating a potential issue like that. I mean, it certainly is a safety issue because there is.
And you've now made it your one and only entrance to the parking lot.
Right.
Which. My concern, one of my concerns with that was that if somebody is coming and they bypass that entrance, they're gonna get turned around and come up Beach Road one way and potentially pull into that exit unless you make sure you have proper signage there, but do not pull in here because.
And I just don't, I mean, it, it also doesn't quite make sense to me with the crosshatch, right? I don't know how you even get into that spot. I, I. To me, I just don't, I don't see the need and I don't, is there a, do you have the parking calculation on my row?
Parking marina, so parking space. It looks like it's basically required fifty-eight. And we have a total of sixty-two, sixty-one.
That's the original decision.
Right, and then, I'm sorry, down here, sixty-one.
Sixty will be out.
What's the, what's the, what's the requirement?
Fifty-eight, fifty-eight.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know.
Take a sign out, maybe I can gain space. I tried twice.
All right. All right, so we changed the, and what, was there a discussion about what's going on? That what's, everybody's okay with the fence?
We, we discussed the fence. And he, he, Mr. Ecclesley indicated that he was going to make it substantial. I mean, my original concern was having something along that road that's gonna hold up to plowing. So the wooden structure, I guess, will be a detail on the plan that will be called out as, as a detail.
I think that it is.
On, on the plan, so we know if they're using six by sixes or.
Five by fives.
Five by five and. Height, we talked some.
I think it needs to be taller if it's gonna be a fence, because we're relying on.
Yeah, so we're talking four feet.
At minimum.
Minimum.
Minimum of four feet high.
So tell me again, I, again, just refresh my memory, because I wasn't here last time.
It wasn't discussed last time.
What's the, what's the material and, and type of fence that's being?
Commercial grade stockade fence made with two by fours and five by five posts. And those posts, instead of being eight feet apart, will be four feet. So it'll be an eight-foot fence, but it'll have, instead of two end posts, it'll also have one.
Eight foot high?
No, sir.
Oh. Eight foot wide.
Eight foot wide.
And height was?
The height, we remained with the three because that's what Donna next door across the way was willing to accept. She didn't like the block kind of thing. She thought that it was too commercial wide.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's fine. I just say, you know, what one homeowner wants, who may very well sell the house. I understand, but she's not the, correct, you know, she's not gonna be the, the only homeowner. So.
And she also said that she lives upstairs. None of those lights are gonna matter whether it's, you know. There's no resonance downstairs.
Keep this wooden fence from going down.
Well, I mean, I.
You go wheel stops to keep this wooden fence from going down?
I don't think you can, because of the size of the lot, right? There's no room to put.
Well, there was initially enough space for the planter.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Going from twenty-six inches.
Yeah, but that's not gonna cover, you need wheel stops, so you have, unless this is from the front of the car to the.
Wheel stops. What's the distance from the fences have to be to keep it from hitting the fence?
Three feet.
That's about it.
So you're getting two other, yeah, I mean, I suppose you could. Yeah. So are you?
It's a bar.
From the wheel and that overhang of the vehicle.
I guess really I gotta change the diamond episode of parking lot too much, but you, you.
No, but here's, so here's the problem, right, is that you have a tight, what, what are those spaces over there? What size are those? Are those the? Those are ten by twenty.
Which is actually typical spaces, nine by eighty.
Nine, yeah, so.
Not in south. Right. Vehicles.
So you're going to. But when you, when you took out the plan, with the two-foot planter, it was twenty-six inches or whatever, twenty-eight inches, whatever it was. When you take that out, you're not making that, you're not putting that space into the parking space. You're just, you're moving the parking space. You know, or you're, you're, I don't know which way you're doing it. I don't know if you're putting the fence on the inside of where that planter was or on the outside of where that planter was, but the spaces aren't getting any bigger, is my point, right?
The spaces are not getting bigger.
Okay.
The fence is offset approximately, I'm gonna say, looking at this, a foot, foot and a half tops. But remember, you have twenty-foot space, so there is ample room to park without, like, impacting the fence, really it's, you know, Mr.
They're trying to people who's getting headlights peril, because if he doesn't fix the fence, or she's gonna take him to court to fix the fence, she's gonna get the light. So if you have wheel stops, the fence don't get hit.
Oh, yeah, so, so wheel stops could be introduced. They, you know, they're paying the butt during.
It is what it is.
Curving won't help there?
It will.
Well, I mean.
But, but it's big overhang, right?
Big curbing, it doesn't, if you have curving, people are gonna pull up to the, you know, the front of the car is gonna go to the curving. They're not gonna pull up to the wheels, you know what I mean? They're not gonna u- utilize that spot and you have a pretty narrow, you know, area to traverse behind that, I think, right? I mean, it's only, I just, I just worry about the wheel stops pushing cars out back toward the, you know, toward the travel lane. And that's my only concern about it.
Technically have, as I look at it, I mean, we have more room to move the fence away from the edge of pavement. We own, believe it or not, I guess we own Beach Road.
Yes, that's correct.
So technically, it's not like we're in the town right over there. So we could certainly go closer, you know, there's a utility pole and a couple other things that we, you know, we want to stay away from. But I think we could pick up and, you know, we could pick up that three feet I was talking about. We probably have a foot and a half now. We moved it two feet off, so with three feet off, if we're, if we're three feet off edge of pavement, that would, should do the trick. Wheel stops wouldn't stop us.
No, I mean, I just, so let me just say this. I, I think in, in the decision, the fence is going to be not just a, you know, a preference for the property owner. It's gonna be a mandatory, you need to maintain it and at least it prevents the lights from going over there. So if there's any damage to it, it's gonna be on the property owner to, to fix it in a timely manner per the special permit versus just anybody putting up a fence in their house and, you know, it may not look great. I just, you know, when you get closer down to where that exit is, you know, you're starting to get a tighter and tighter travel lane where you can pull out, and I just worry about trying to cut down those spaces in any way, you know, farther into that travel. But I don't know.
He's right. If you move the fence back, the curb becomes the curb, the curb stop. And then you buy your three feet and the car won't hit the fence. Yeah, I think we just move the fence back, no, the two feet.
Leave it curved to the. Okay.
Yeah, the only counterpoint, and I don't wanna upset momentum, has to do with Randy Brown's concern for snowmobile. So as long as we take that into consideration.
Look back at his comments and how much he wanted initially.
Where did the fence, so you have a twenty-four or twenty, whatever, twenty, on the map, it's twenty-four on here. I think you said it was twenty-six or twenty-eight is what they sold, but twenty-four inch planter. Did the fence end up on the restaurant side or on the beach roadside or somewhere in the middle?
Restaurant side. Or arguably restaurant side. I don't know how they would hit, if you do a fence in the edge of pavement. It's gotta be probably overlay or something somehow, but.
Yeah, full, they put it on the inside because the fence isn't that wide.
Yeah, we have the edge of pavement, we have the fence a foot off, right? So there's no way that that wall would fit.
So you put it right in the middle where that planter is.
Or even arguably on the parking lot side of where that wall is. So the planter would fit wide.
I can answer that question.
Is that right?
Put it on the, on the inside.
Towards the parking lot.
Towards the parking lot, right on the line.
There's the old one and there's the new one.
Yeah, this is the old, the one you've got up now is the old one.
So you have to be to play.
That's the origin.
Where that planter is.
Exactly, yeah, so now we're on the same page.
Yeah, so we can shift it to feet.
And that's not, it, it won't be a BMW issue because, because it's gonna be the same as what it was.
Not approaching anyone.
Not approaching anymore into the. Very solemn and like, Mr. Chairman.
Solomon?
I just try to keep all the departments.
Solomon like.
Yeah, yeah.
So our planner has to craft a new item twelve.
All right, so.
Oh, height, forty, forty-eight inches.
All right.
Mr. Speaker, that's my input.
Any other board comments before I turn this over to other folks?
Doug, you taking?
Why?
Any other board comments?
Just the fence needs to be four feet high. And it should be well-designed. Part of this is aesthetic purposes as well. Just look like the.
It'll be shown on the plan.
Yeah.
As a detail.
All right, any other board comments? Any town officials comments?
All right, just out of respect to Dr. Mueller. Official title of Dr. Mueller.
Fair enough. All right, any, can you just flip off the share screen from there? Clap off the thing just so I can see. And actually take off the spotlight. I know, I'm asking a lot.
Yeah.
So much better.
Hi, Dick.
All right, that didn't work. So anybody on Zoom, oh, I'll open up the public comments. Anybody on Zoom have any public comments? Anybody in the audience here have any public comments? Okay. All right, so. I think. If I'm not looking at my notes, if that's everything. That we need to deal with.
So the before thing.
The only other thing, it's probably just worth raising so that everybody should take in, in consideration is, I know the truck delivery issue came up last time. I listened to it. I don't see an issue. I mean, they, they get a truck to deliveries there for years without a problem. I think it's mostly done off hours for most restaurants, so, yeah, it is what it is.
Well, I think they, they set it up well, yeah.
So, okay. All right. Good, so. We need to draft up a modification. And then we will consider that at the next meeting. Okay. No, I'm gonna say no, only because, Rob, you're gonna tweak that to, to put in those changes on the final site plan.
Sure.
Yeah.
Is the wellhead stuff also?
It is part of the consideration?
Yeah, that'll be part of the modification. I don't see, I mean, I guess we didn't, I guess I didn't hear a heck of a lot of discussion on it last time, but I don't really see an issue with it. Board, anybody have any, let me grab that, where's that?
Satisfied by infiltrating?
What's wellhead? Management of materials and potential pollutants.
That's gonna lead into the problem.
Yeah.
Specific.
I suppose the one question would be as far as there's no proposal about, about fueling or anything like that, that's gonna be there or what? How is that? I can't remember that.
Legally, I can't push fuel in there because.
I didn't think so, okay.
No fuel tanks, I think, right?
I'd love to do it, but it's so three hundred foot. The whole problem.
I don't see anything of significance that needs to be dealt with for the wellhead. Anybody have any questions or comments on that? Okay. All right. All right, so, yeah, if you could just make those changes on there. I don't know what kind of addition you have on there about the fence, but if you could put in some details about what the fence would be.
Throw a detail right on there.
That would be.
Whatever exactly it looks like.
That would be great. And then, so submit that, we take a quick look at it at the next meeting, close the hearing and vote on and have a decision ready to go to vote on. So. Why don't we put it on for eight o'clock? On June twenty-eighth, do I hear a motion?
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, Mike Vorderd, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Aye.
David Sutton, aye.
David's gonna aye. Okay.
How did you immediately jump from this meeting to the twenty-three? Why is there a man?
I'm gonna be on the.
I just.
That's how, okay. We all submit our, our. We all submit our our schedules and try to get the most people we can show up to these things and that's.
What do we discuss first?
Gregoire.
Gregoire, Lincoln Road.
Mister Gregoire submitted a letter and some exhibits, I'll read everyone's uh preference. June sixth, two thousand twenty-two. Planning Board Town South, dear board members, we are seeking approval to utilize that portion of Lincoln Road beyond the bar gate for a distance of approximately six hundred fifty feet.
I can't play at this.
To access our parcel of land for the purpose of building a home. Town maps and maps of handy kind of show that Lincoln Road exists exists substantially beyond said gate. Additionally, town documents from the town meeting ninety-four nine indicate that the townspeople voted to continue the use of Lincoln Road. There are no more recent records to indicate otherwise, the serious consideration of this petition is very important to our ability to build in this spot. Attachments, assessors map, extended view of the lot, uh, town map, eight and seventy. At the south with Henry County nineteen twelve and the record of vote, uh, at the town meeting regarding the uh. The continuing use of the road, March twenty seventh, ninety-four nine, respectfully, Paul A. Gregoire is speaking with Paul today. I I respect um that he he needs a a useful implement to make this happen. Uh, as it relates to the planning board, I explained that we don't, we can't establish the frontage, but I would kindly. Do some research in my desk so that we could perhaps provide a. A more in-depth response. It is, I did also spend it, uh, everybody is a survey matter.
And to the extent it's not, it's a not cause issue.
Yes, so but the that's the discussion, uh, we, I got the material today, so that's it.
Alright.
Uh, let's see, Great City House is next.
Yeah.
Okay, so I did speak with Art of Business uh today. Little misunderstanding as we entered the last meeting, uh, but I will coordinate with Art. As related to some of the improvements he has undertaken. I'll, I'll, I will do a brief analysis of the parking to find out. It looks like it's adequate, so a problem, or what, so again, he has his direction. Yeah. I'm sorry.
You move on from.
Yes, yeah, come on back, you're still saying, yeah. We discussed it as an accessory use, he was actually here at the last meeting.
Correct.
Oh, we, you heard, heard him.
So um. Yes, so um. Alright, so you know, put that for the special item.
I'll hold on to the discussion, I'll just try to provide some good data, and he also mentions he'd like to um put up a play structure. Need to mention that for this year.
A place gate, a place gate. I'm in favor of place gates.
There, no, and how adjacent to the parking lot.
Couldn't get.
I don't imagine it's gonna be the part, I think it's gonna be. Green space. Away from the water.
It'll be fine.
Other woods.
I've already said. We'll be next.
I will speak for my daughter, that's her favorite question. I think the parents would. Alright, so next, uh, routine is the snowboard Steve, uh, I think the only thing to say is that's been. Uh, finalized and now the door.
That's correct.
Alright, Jesse picked it up. Sometime. Um.
Check that out.
Greens West requests to release covenant lieu of bond initiation of street acceptance process. Freshwater that landed last time.
So. Last time.
Randy Brown.
East that released the west.
Yes.
Uh, we still need to be. Dealt with. He responded to the already's letter.
Yes, I gave a a formal response to the west. I just to make sure we're responding to corporate timeframes, let's see, um, so over at the west side. Mister Brown was to coordinate with the press you and look at the bunch items to establish a value. Um, for the security that would be opposed to that, right, once that's established, uh, downstairs. We can move ahead with releasing the lots, the helping the covenant.
And that's still on there.
I do have correspondence from this evening from Mister Brown.
Alright, uh, so uh, question is completed many of the outstanding punch list items for the few remains, you have that updated, I just made the barrier of this work to be about twenty-four thousand. Which includes record plans and all we've got to close up the office, does he have any questions that we know? Yes. Oh.
I'm glad that we have a civil engineer as the head of the Department of Public Works. I'm trying to get on Randy's good side, but it is. It it is good to have a professional.
He's a, he's a great call. So, what was the number, I'm sorry, twenty-four?
Twenty-four thousand four.
Yep, and that's just great, that's just straight. So. Factor in it. Plus around that, you're probably thirty or something like that percent. So um. What is this, the one? This is the one with the. Yes.
Yep.
Jason's unmuted.
Yes, I am.
He was well aware of that answer, um. And they've already been put in?
They put the marker in, we seeded it, yep.
Alright. And maybe Randy has this, and I just, it's just not on this abbreviated list, but Jason, do you know if there's um? What the, what the, I guess if there is a homeowner association, what they have on their punch list that's not on this, if anything?
Uh, I mean, I've not asked them specifically what their punch list would be for the road handoff for the town, I figured that would be a town issue.
And I, yeah, whether it, whether it. It deals with with the road requirement, but you know, there may be things that they suggest that. That go to that and the town will want those done before the road gets handed off, I just didn't know there was any kind of coordination with the homeowner association about any kind of.
Um, not directly, no, because they they're, you know, and we, I have no problem going to them with that question and asking them specifically, I don't know what kind of requirement we really have to entertain. That would be the magical question, secondly, I mean, I I I think the the purpose of, uh, with the hope really from this meeting specifically is to release those uh lots from Covenant and Lua Bond, we'll we'll place the bond or the bid bond. For the thirty thousand. Um, we don't really have a problem with that, but I have those two lots under agreement to sale for sale, I'd like to be able to sell those lots, so I'd need them released. Um, regarding the actual hand over to the road, uh, we can have that discussion when we go through that process, I'm hoping to just. At the bare minimum, get the those lots removed from Covenant today or after we place the bond, whatever the next process has to be. The road handoff, we obviously will have multiple discussions going forward, because it's not gonna make, it obviously didn't make the May meeting, and and we have some time to re reconcile whatever we need to reconcile before any kind of special. Meeting in the fall or whether we have to wait till next May.
No, that's fair, and I don't, you know, my intention was simply just to see if there was any list out there. Just to make sure that we are, I, you know, I do think you get most of it with this, but every now and then there's stuff that the homeowners pick up on that that is required that isn't picked up in a punch list from the town, so. I think they're a good backup, but um, if that hasn't been done yet, that's fine, I just wanna see if it exists.
Yeah, I I we could ask them that question, I mean, I I have the hesitation because they're gonna ask for. Uh, the moon and the stars and everything in between, I just don't know what the benefit would be, I think it would be would be with the for a road handoff, it should be a DPW issue, not really necessarily a homeowner issue, but.
Yeah, again, I, you know, I guess I look a little differently in that I see that when you got folks who are living there. You know, they may have input that. That they pick up on things that a DPW inspection doesn't quite pick up on.
Do you think it would be more appropriate for me just to ask the HOA if they have outstanding concerns to address it with the DPW versus me actually having be a meter?
You know, that may be fair, um, and then at least the DPW kinda has a sense of if there's anything that that strikes them. Um, it's obviously something you're gonna need, you know, a copy of as well down the line, but um, for the road, again, I just wanna make sure that there's no issues.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think it's gonna impact anything tonight, I just wanted to see where that stood.
Yeah, I I appreciate it.
Alright, any uh board questions, comments on this? Thirty thousand. As a bottom out? Okay, um. What, uh, do you have what we're.
Lots fifteen and eighteen.
Fifteen and eighteen. Okay.
I will, and that is the remainder.
Yep, okay. Um, so. Do I hear a uh? You have the actual document?
No, so.
Yeah, no, it's just that, it's a, it's fine. Um. So do I hear a motion to release lots fifteen and eighteen? From the Covenant and Lua Bond for Greens West and. Install a bond in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to be. Put in place prior to release of those lots.
Marcus Phelps will move.
Do I hear a second? Do a roll call vote, Michael Doherty, aye.
Marcus Phelps, aye.
Phil Tinger, aye.
David Sutton, aye.
Dave, aye.
Alright, so that's all set, so Jason, if you wanna just work with, um, you know, getting that bond. Uh, in the format that needs to be with the town and and um, getting that document over for us to sign.
I'll take care of that, then, I don't know what we do for the the road handoff part of it, um, do, I guess I'll talk to the HOA, have them. Reach out to the DPW, I can have them provide a list to the DPW and then. We can work with the DPW to determine what is really necessary, is that appropriate way of doing it, or are we gonna, I mean, I, I don't know.
I'll let you, you know, I I I mean, I'm not, certainly not. Speaking for the DPW in any way, shape or form, and I would, I would defer to what they said, I just look at this list and I see, and I I understand that this is. You know. This is the DPW list, but it it strikes me that getting the process of talking to the HOA and seeing where, you know, those potential problems come in now. Um, letting the, letting the DPW take a look at that and they may offer comments on whether they think it's within the scope of work or not. I think that getting that process started now is probably a useful exercise, given how far along you are, but that, you know.
I concur, so I will, I will broach the HOA with that to create a list between them to bring it to the DPW and then we'll hash it out with Randy. I'll take it from there.
Alright.
Alright.
Thank you, sir, have a good evening.
Thank you.
What do you need this?
Just that one.
Alright. Master Plan Advisory Committee, Mr. Phelps.
Yes, uh, we met last uh week and we had a quorum of the planning board. Because Mister Doherty was there, myself and Mister Spina. So we'll have to get those minutes when they're put together, the planning board will also approve those minutes besides the master plan advisory committee. And we reached a major milestone after five reviews of the community survey. It was adopted by the committee, so. We're going forward, hopefully the survey will be out in late June electronically, and in our next meeting we'll be looking at a paper, the paper copy, which is also available. For people who don't do things online. And. I guess that was about all I had, Dave, did you have any, Dave was there, yes. Mike was there?
I don't know.
It was a longer meeting than I expected, it actually went two hours, but it was shorter than the other one, which went three hours.
I try not to show up, because all I'm doing is creating work for us to approve minutes.
I know.
When I show up.
Well, oh, you could call Dave and tell Dave not to show up. Yeah, so anyway, good, good stuff, so uh, short term rental subcommittee, Dick.
Uh, we got a meeting coming up on the twenty-first at six o'clock, and we expect to have about a hundred and fifty responses to our questionnaire.
Fantastic. Alright. Alright, uh, minutes approval. Having not seen, I'm going to defer on this one, then we actually have something. Mister Sutton, or actually, is there anything else, Marcus, uh, before we close? Or anybody else on the board, but I'm just, nope, kinda looking at you. Alright, Mister Sutton.
You can get something in there. Okay, share with the group.
I already shared.
Alright.
I make a motion to close the meeting.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.